Thank you. I would like to call this, welcome everyone to the regular committee of the whole meeting for April 11th, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Introduction of late items, please.
Thank you, worship. Two items now here. The first is an addition. It's a delegation, Mr. Wally Wells, for the municipal natural capital pilot study for the city of Nanaimo, that's I think P A. And removal of the delegation under 12 C. This is removing delegation of Ms. Kathy Grisosa and Ms. Sabrina Hornfeld on behalf of the Platinum Society. They said they'll be coming back at a future date, but not for this week.
Thank you very much. Does council have any other items? Seeing them called for a motion for the adoption of the agenda as a matter of fact. Thank you, Councilor Yelton. Second, by Councilor, discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can we have a motion for the adoption of the minutes of the regular committee of the whole meeting for March 14th, please?
So.
Thank you. Secondary, Councilor Pratt, thank you very much. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. There's no presentation scheduled. Next one is the 2016-2020 financial plan workshop. We expect that the finance staff will be managing that. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. Unless the CEO wants to make some comments, we will jump right into it. We did look each one through the eye. The last time we spoke about this, we promised that we were going to have this opportunity to take a look again at the 2016-2020 financial plan. Today, I brought the finance team who happened to go to Crystal Ball. They will help us work through the financial plan. I would say a few things. Not much has changed since we brought this in front of you in December. Deborah is going to lead the conversation as to what has changed and where we are. All I want to say is, this process begins, a few steps that we have to go through to adopt two bylaws, one being the financial plan, a bylaw itself amended as it may be, and then that will be followed at the same time by the adoption of the property tax bylaw. And there's a magic date that goes with these dates, which is May 16th, May 15th of each year. And so, we are starting today, so we can have enough time to go through the process of adopting these two bylaws. You will have an additional opportunity sometime in May, or towards the end of May, to look at another iteration of our financial plan, looking into the future. So, some things that you may not have had a chance to firm up today, you will still have another opportunity to either amend the 2016 to 2020, but we prefer that we begin to work on the 2017 to 2021 financial plan. We bring this in front of you in full recognition that there are some other planning processes that are still in at play. We would have an opportunity, as we have today, to amend the financial plan if we have to run those plans in place. So, having said that, unless the questions of process from council, I will hand over to Deborah. She's going to walk you through a short presentation. We estimate that should take about 30 to 40 minutes. Leaves you with about an hour or so of time. Thank you.
Any preliminary questions from council? Seeing none? Please.
So, do you remember the last workshop we had was in November? So, we really have a update. So, as Victor explained today, what we'd like to do is focus on three things. First of all, review the 2016-2020 financial plan, the changes that have been made since council had talked through the bylaw in December, and that will be reflected in the bylaw that goes with the property tax bylaw. We want to talk about funding capacity and strategies. And so, we'll be talking about reserves. And we also want to talk about the next budget cycle, because we've already discussed it here. So, this will be for the 2017-2021 financial plan. So, the one thing first of all I'll do is I'll just talk about your budget books that you have in front of you, just so that you're really clear about what's in them. Of course, that budget book, that information in that book reflects that draft plan that we brought to council and that you reviewed at the workshop in November. Changes were made, and they were incorporated into the budget that we, that council passed in December. So, mostly that information is still up to date. So, with the changes that we've made since the budget bylaw was passed in December, we still have, and you can see here the provisional property tax increases, 0% in 2016 and on. For this one that we're now bringing to you, the annual still remains at 0% for 2016, 2.8, a little bit less for 2017, 18 and 19, and the same for 2020. Here, we'll talk about what changes we made that cost that. Just to point out too, is that the last 1% increase to the general asset management reserve happens in 2017. You can see that in those property tax increases. So, right now, with the changes that we've made, the estimated impact on the typical home is, for a typical home, being about $300,000 for taxation, and we've got here the city of Nanaimo, the regional district, and the library. For, of course, for taxation, it's 0%, no impact. For water fees, we have that 7.5% increase, $31, 0 fees, a 5% increase, so 561. The solid base collection fees, a dollar, 1%. The regional library increase is about $3.66 impact for the typical household, and a 4.6% increase. The regional district will be about $10.57, a 4.1% increase. So, provisional to annual budget changes.
Sure. Sure, I'm not sorry on the last slide. On the regional district, that $10 increase is a $10 increase on...
A tip for a typical home. So, a typical home is assessed at $300,000.
So, the home's 500K plus the $10 increase over here, what is that percentage?
I'm going to write that down.
Sorry, what am I...
No, do not...
What am I clearing?
Through the mirror. Yes, that's correct. That's a rate, basically a rate for a thousand. So, they hire the asset, or they hire the assessment value, they...
So, $700 in a home would be around $20. Because that's... And then the library one? Okay, I got it. I just think we will use the library, but again, how it works.
So, these are the changes that have been made to the budget since it was passed in December. You have them in your report, that are attached to the report for this meeting. We have changes, and what I've done here is, these are the changes, and this is the impact on property tax, but not every change had an impact on property tax. So, here, we had an increase in our growth estimate for the provisional budget. We used 1.2 million, and actually ended up being 1.458, that helps us. We put, we added revenues for the poll answer ready, and we reduced the RCMP recovery. So, a net increase in revenues of the $249,000. So, for annual operating expenditures, we had a decrease in the operating subsidy for the conference center. We had an increase in employee benefit costs, insurance costs. We had a decrease, and council members have reported to council about rewarding a new contract for our maintenance software, and we increased the budget by 5,000. We added in two additional RCMP members, and you'll see here, there's a change but no impact on property taxation, because at this point, we're going to fund it from reserves. We had to add in an estimate for the new, or the new charge to local municipalities for DME testing. We increased the public works training program for one year for $45,000. And we had some changes in project expenditures, and some of these have come forward to council already. The comprehensive first management grant, he's forward to council, it's 100% funded from a grant. We've put in money for the conference last year, or last weekend, I should say, this past weekend. Putting money for training equipment, training and equipment for the finance department. Firestation 1, we added $35,000 budget for comprehensive assessment of firestation number 1, for which we'll build a business case, which is for council to consider. Not diving boards, we moved it from 2017 to 2016, because it needs to be done initially. Middle collar redam assessment, we added a budget of $75,000, so we can carry out that assessment. Fortunately, I didn't put four things in that we did in your report, and one of them is the roof replacement for its ceiling. And it was actually in the plan in 2017, but what we did is removed it to 2016, it needs to be done now, unfortunately, and the cost estimate was less. Fire headquarters, we needed to increase the seismic upgrade project by $45,000. And we're going to delay the boxwood connector project in a section group of projects in 14 areas. Lower collar redam, we increased the budget by $350,000 funded from the service. And you can see here when there's a little, nothing in the impact of taxation, we've used reserves. So, we have the change there, the net change is about $663,000, about $59,000 impact on taxation, which is why we're able to keep at that 0%. So, this is a financial, any questions?
Sure.
Sure. The last one.
So, there's, there's a heavy reliance on reserves, banking from reserves. And so, I was wondering, what's, what's the reasoning behind that?
So, what we take, and we're, when we talk about that number two point on the framework for today's discussion, is on funding capacity, and we'll talk about reserves there and our strategy there.
Will we talk about specifics of spending on reserves?
Absolutely. And we'll talk to you about our strategies.
Okay.
I don't want you, do you want me to address your question here? Anybody else? So, this is a financial summary of operating only. So, you know how we basically have two components to our financial planning, to our budgets, operating? That's that annual operating, or those delivery of services that we do year after year. And then we have projects, which are, the majority of them are renewal projects, as well as new projects or upgrade projects. So, this focus is only on operating. So, and what we have here is general sewer and water, and we know general is all the services that parks and rep, roads, all of the park services that they finance, HR, and land services, all of those services. The sewer and water, of course, to deliver assignment to the sewer and, and water services. So, the revenues here in general, and the sources here, so taxation in general is 97.3 million for 2016. Fees and charges, of course, for here in general is 12.1, a lot of that will be parks and rep fees, building inspections, those type of fees. And of course, for sewer and water, you'll see fees are, of course, the story. So, sewer and water, sewer 6.3 and water 16.1. We have other revenue sources in general, that'll be things like the casino revenues, profit fines, 19.1 million. So, then the total revenues for 2016 for operating is 128.5, in sewer 6.3, in water 16.1, the total 150 million.
Is that possible? Yeah. Sorry to interrupt you. I just requested a copy of the PowerPoint, because from here I can't read. Oh, the screen, I'm wondering if any of the council members have got the copy of the PowerPoint?
Cool.
I'm sure how many we have here.
Okay, so those are our annual funding sources for operating. So, what do we spend about? So, for operating expenditures in general, 150 million, 3.3 in sewer, and 9.5 in water. For projects, and this will answer the question that Councilor Deborah asked, for projects in general, we use 7.1 million of that money to fund projects. Then what we do is, we also have certain transfers to reserves, asset management being probably one of the bigger ones. So, from this money, we fund these operating expenditures, we fund these projects, and we put money into reserves. That's our, our funding challenges. So, here's our 2016 financial summary for projects. So, again, let's look at our plan, we're looking at project expenditures. And we know we carry forward projects from 2015 that we didn't complete, and I brought them by general sewer and water, so a total of 27 million. In our 2016 plan, we have new projects planned, each of the funds for a total of 33. So, for projects, we have $60 million planned for 2016. Okay, how do we fund it? We use 7.1, we saw that on the previous slide, from taxation. We have reserves. When we carry forward projects, we put all of that money in the reserves, and we take it right back on again. So, we fund 2015, carry forwards from reserves. The new plan, we're using 17.6. Now, we have grants and private contributions for 8.7.
What was that last one? Sorry, grants and...
Grants and private contributions for 8.7 million. A big piece of this will be the 4.6.
The 4.6.
Which...
And this conversation, is that like when people, we've spent so much money here and here and here, and we're going to see where we are, we're up on DC, not that we just decided, the decision maker on cities decide what we do, but that's part of core reviews on Zoom. Backline, I've been speaking about since day one about it, because Columbus is quite a bit lower, for example. Okay. But that's another conversation...
You mean how effective we are in going out?
That's another conversation another day.
Mr. Mayor.
So, the grants that we're talking about here, these, these are funding sources, not grants that we're giving out to organizations. These are funding sources.
Okay.
Before you go on, can I get you to back up one? So, if you'll see fees and charges for sewer at 6.3, then you see operating expenditures at 3.0. You see water utility fund at 16, and operating expenditures at 9.5. That looks like a huge...
Okay, let's talk about...
Right.
Okay. So, what's the intention of user fees? So, for sewer and water, it has to be 100% funded from user fees. The user fees are intended to pay the annual operating and maintenance costs for sewer and water, and also contribute to the renewal of the infrastructure. So, it's a, it's a standalone utility, 100% funded from user fees. Very good question.
A follow-up to that, when you get to the water utility, obviously, remember that we ran a deficit in 2015, and as you go into water conservation and stuff like that, you have to adjust your fees at some point. And so, that exercise is going to happen, we'll need to review that exercise probably sometime in 2016, so can we adjust if we need to?
So, just to be clear, in actual fact, in actual fact, we're not, we're collecting less than what the provision of service costs. We're actually drawing from reserves?
Yeah, no, no. Last year what happened is, so we will have a plan, so let's say this is it. We have a plan here of 16 million, we're going to spend 9.5 on operating and maintenance, the rest will go in reserves. What happened last year is these, this was lower, and the transfer to reserves was lower. Okay? So, that's, that's where it starts to become, or can be, we have to be careful.
Much of this is to fund the short-term financing of the water treatment.
The funding, or the expenditures for the water treatment plant are in here. Okay, so we talked about, this is the project piece. Any questions about this? So, provisional to annual, and I, we call provisional the one that you passed in, in December, because of course, it's not one of the visible property tax. So, a summary of the key changes between the two for years two to five, because we just finished talking about year one, is we added the Sartre Mariner Field Riding Project in 2017. We delayed, we talked about that, but we had other projects in future years, and we've delayed those further.
Yes, I just, I don't know our reasoning for delaying the boxwood, what is that?
Probably our director, we never have a choice to be delayed this time.
So, we delayed the boxwood connector, because when we went back and did our engineered studies, it indicated with the traffic demand that we have right now, we don't have to do all of the improvements right now, so we're just developing a phased improvement project. So, it's, it's going to be phased differently than it was indicated originally. So, some of the pieces that were planned can be delayed.
And we are only just sort of understanding that, or did we, we make the different choice at a different time?
We're, we're currently going through the design. That's where boxwood is right now. It's in, it's in that design phase.
Okay. Thank you. Also, the five-day plan we received from the conference center, the operating subsidy was lower in all years. So, are we ready to leave this piece of the conversation, which is the 2016-2020 financial plan? Yes?
At the conference that we wrapped, we had a presentation on asset management, and so, obviously, we have both reserves, and one of the keys was to develop a reserve policy. So, what is our reserve policy? Do we have one that happens to want to develop?
So, if you, if you remember, you, you approved some transfers to capital asset reserves, maybe a year or two back, and that's the funding strategy for those reserves. So, we have those reserves in place. Now, what's happening now, I think we are waiting on updating the next, the next round, but at the same time, we are now formalizing the policy of it, and so you'll see two things come in front of you, one, the policy side, and secondly, the funding strategy based on the update that's coming online. So, we, as a city, are actually, like 12, one of 12 municipalities are cross-country who are leaders in asset management. So, we actually need it in charge in that aspect, and can let Deborah and, and the director of FGN to speak to that, but we have a good handle on asset management.
And has it changed at all over the past years? Have we changed it, or managing our assets? We changed it. It just, I, I know that we do 1% a year, and that...
So, we started that...
Yeah, and that, yeah. Accumulates. This year, I'm, it seems to me, I, you know, I could be mistaken, but it seems to me we're relying more on reserves for our, our day-to-day budget, our operating budget, financing, just fees to it, and, and I know that's a little different financially. So, has it changed?
Let's separate the conversation. Let's finish the asset management piece, then I'll speak to our user strategy on reserves in general. So, to finish the asset management piece, then we'll look at the other side.
I'm primarily interested in the reserve.
So, so your question relates to have we made changes in asset management over the last number of years?
This year, over this year.
I don't, I mean, we're changing all the time our practices as we, as we, as that evolves and we get to be best practices, so we're constantly changing how we're setting ourselves up to manage our assets, and we get more information, and as we get more information, we do a better job at, at managing those assets, but, and that's, that's changing. We have two fairly big initiatives right now, our land program, which is a, a large grant that we've been awarded, and we're working on that project with 12 other municipalities in the program, in the country, so we're working through that, and we also got a grant for risk management. So, we're looking at, looking at our assets through a risk framework. So, those are the changes that we're working through currently on asset management.
And then the reserve policy?
So, I think the deep question you're asking is, are we relying on our day-to-day on reserves?
Are we relying more than you have in your past?
The answer is no. So, the, the strategy that we use, which is a practice that we have always followed, is that for any one-time course, non-recurring course, the project is done, you can fund from reserves. That's the same strategy that we continue to follow. You'll see deep amounts in reserves that relates to care forwards, and Deborah did speak to that. So, when a project is not finished in 2015, the funding that comes with that project is put in reserves, and then we'll go back and bring that money back to fund the project. So, we haven't changed that. We do not rely on our day-to-day, like paying...
We're not even having any of our reserve funds for operating.
So, we're going to talk about, we're going to leave the 2016-2020 financial plan for a bit, and we're going to talk about funding capacity. And what we've just handed out to you right now is a summary of our reserves. So, we know funding capacity, we know moving it from taxation, user fees, reserves, borrowing, grants, private contributions, that makes up our funding capacity. How do we manage best management? Okay, funding strategies. So, we maintain a consistent level of funding from general taxation, taxation each year for projects, of around $7 million. So, what this means is projects are not putting pressure on taxation. Fortunately, we're fortunate to do that. We manage reserves, and this is probably a key piece, and this speaks to the reserve policies that we're going to be developing. So, we manage reserves, contributions, and withdrawals. We have a long-term planning perspective, 10-plus years, and we're building our capacity that way now. Five years. We use borrowing, we apply for grants and receive grants, and we have private contributions. To give us, I'm assuming, what would be, give me an example of a private contribution. Contribution, we call it paying taxes from the court authority, we call that a private contribution. Private contributions can be from community groups. Okay. Yes?
Chair, it's your turn to Deborah. Could you explain to me how that $7 million figure was arrived at?
Probably it was arrived at when we started having really low property taxes in places and needed to keep it. So, maybe two years ago.
When it says for projects, and we pegged that as $7 million, how do we know that's a reasonable amount?
That's a very good question. We need to look at the bigger picture. That's where we need to look at this long-term planning, 10-plus years. 20 years would be right there.
And all of our projects are on board.
Exactly, exactly. We're going to bring that to you.
Well, that forms part of your capital project priority setting, so you have a sense of, when you do that final session with you, how, how much of a gap there is between what we have and what you need to do your priority projects, and then we can use some of these strategies to fund those funds.
Good. Thank you.
So, with the reserves analysis, to take a, look at it in a different framework, often we've looked at it in kind of general sewer, water, non-stat, stat. So, what we've done here is put it in a new framework, and hopefully, it helps support some strategies for how we manage them and use them. So, basically, we've called, classified them as contingency reserves, and we're going to talk about that, council initiative reserves, and capital reserves. So, contingency reserves, and you'll see that in the... So contingency reserves, and you'll see that in the first section of your report that was just handed out. So we have an RCMP contract contingency reserve. This was set up some years ago, and there was outstanding contract negotiations regarding the RCMP contract. That's since been settled. The reserve is still there. And yes, that'll be the reserve that we use if we need to, to find those two additional RCMP numbers. So an ICE control reserves, if we go over and we don't have a surplus, an operating surplus to absorb some of that, we will be tapping to that reserve. We have uninsured claims and uncollected taxes contingency reserves. Where we run into a problem and our insurance doesn't cover it, or we have tax days that are not paid. So it gives us some resiliency to those problems. We have council initiative reserves, like the housing legacy reserve, the sustainability, the regional initiative production reserve. And you'll see those on your report. You will see the balances at the end of each year, the contributions, and the withdrawals. We have capital reserves or discretionary reserves. We have property acquisition, general capital, and we have the community works fund of the three registries. Where we can look at those reserves for new initiatives if council decides to withhold.
So if we look at your standard relationship between a landlord and a tenant with respect to a residential property, we approach it a certain way. Commercial relationships are much different than they are for residential. So for example, if you own a shop or you're leasing a shop and it needs new garage doors, the position of the landlord is generally that if you own that building, you would have to pay for those new garage doors. Therefore, don't be coming looking to me or the landlord for the replacement of those doors. I'm relating this to the RCMP contract, and the DNA testing is a typical example that we're starting to see, that they're taking, the RCMP seems to be taking a view that anything you would be required to provide for your, if you had your own force, we're going to be taking the same position. The old notion that when you paid for the RCMP contract in years past and you got everything, that's not happening anymore, that they're heading more towards an à la carte sort of menu. You get basically services, and then you're going to be required to pay for a number of those services. And I know that, for example, DNA has taken everybody by surprise. Have we explored that further?
I believe the DNA testing is actually a provincial service, and that what will happen is it will be an allocation across just as you explained, it's a step we're downloading. Have we explored what we can do to counter that? I do have to ask either the CAO or Deb to respond.
To Deborah.
Yes?
Yes, so I think we had discussed that when you came upstairs. The DNA portion, that's part of the entire province, and if they administer through our GANs and GAN's task force, there they will approve for the DNA portion. And that is actually spelled out by the number of members you have worked with across the province. So in a way, yes, that's a whole separate thing, and it's just now coming into being the billing on that issue. So the other side of it is when we get such changes, we're spawned by reserves, while we're trying to understand. So this is a new initiative coming down the pipe. So we'll need to spend a little more time as to what that looks like going forward because of being new, and I will need to know, is it going to be increasing, is it stable? And that's the dynamics we have to deal with with the RCMP. But that's where your contingency comes into play. So you can cushion the impact as those changes come through. There is a larger conversation, obviously, that says if now the feds are saying, here is your basic, you can pick and choose these menus. At a certain point, you may end up really seeing that it's probably better off to have your own force, depending on what you're dealing with. But as of now, we haven't done much analysis of what you have.
That's where I was going, because there's always these comparisons between an RCMP force and a private force. And it appears now that the RCMP are looking at many of the items that we purchased from them as being à la carte items. If you had your own force, you have to do this. So why are we any different? I think there's more and more, we're heading in that direction.
So just for clarity, on the reserves or surplus, what my thing says, with the RCMP budget, don't we, we have a surplus each year consistently over $1 million, which I think we just found out? And then this DNA invoice, I think it's $50K. So I'm okay with that, because a DNA, we've got to enhance and protect people and get more modern technology. I think that's just a way society evolved and getting that modern tools for their job. So at the end of the day, that $50K is probably damn well worth it compared to considering that I think we're pushing $2 million surplus in the RCMP contract or not.
I think last year was something like $90,000.
Okay, so around $9 million bucks.
Yeah. And then the tax ones. So again, with reserves analysis, to look at these, kind of this classification, contingency, council initiatives, capital reserves, this general capital is often where the previous year surplus will go into. And we also have infrastructure renewal reserves. So that includes IT, facility development, equipment depreciation, HOP here, and then of course it includes the general asset management, the sewer and the water asset management reserves. We also have development cost charges reserves. And again, that's the money developers pay to the city so that the city can find infrastructure that addresses growth, so new infrastructure. And it's according to a very specific project risk that supports the bio that enables us to go and collect that money. And we have development cost charges for roads, drainage, parks, sewer, and water. And it must be spent on those projects that support that model.
And sorry, another question is, on the DCC charges, would SaaS spend on those? Is there, I should know this, but we have more things to know. Does it have a earmark in that area? Is it vicinity max, how far we have to come on that project? For example, if someone's paying DCC charges for new subway, they say self-manual, and we need something north, can we have the liberty to use those monies for that, or is it in that vicinity for a park in that area or in that area?
The projects per the bio that are with the bio are citywide.
Okay, so on the city, here's the issue.
It's to support infrastructure, road, infrastructure, that's citywide, not areas specific. Mr. De, did you have anything to add? So this will be what you want to see. So here's a reserves analysis, dollars in the millions. Just want to caution you that in the current financial plan and the long-term planning, there are projects that have been discussed that are not in there yet and therefore not funded from those reserves. So just to be careful that we don't have anything in for fire station number one, the public works yard, those type of projects that are still in the discussion stage, business case stage. But in the five-year plan, yes?
Can you just give us a few more examples of what you have in there?
What we, the projects that we have in there.
I think are in this pot.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. So what we do have in here are many, probably over 50%, well, of our project or infrastructure renewal projects. So it'll be for road rehab, sewer and water main renewal. It will be for, we have the, what else do we find out of reserves right now? All of our fleet replacement, IT infrastructure renewal, and of course, the facility renewal program, which is, and basically buildings or components. So it'll be renewal of roofs and HVACs and all those components, interior finishing. That's what we find out of the reserves. Harwood Centennial Park, it's funded out of the community works reserve, the project there. Yes? So is there an amount in the budget this year for Harwood Centennial? Yes, in 2016. And when is that project to be finished off? Will it be finished in 2016 or is it?
The covered space is in 217, 218 right now. We hope to modify from 217, but we should be able to put that all in for 217.
I didn't know what you said in your first remarks.
Pardon me? The covered space, which is the larger one, that's the covered one, of course, sir, that's in actually 217, 218 split up right now. But our goal is to come back and put it into 217.
So just for purposes of audio recording, I would ask some of the staff that have to answer questions about the budget, maybe switch places, so you guys are up at this table, and you guys are recorded and public, and get your answers. Dale, Richard, please, maybe switch with Philip and Guillermo. And maybe everyone takes just slightly louder so we get the recordings, and we're all going a little soft spoken. Thanks.
Okay, so again, this graph shows you our reserve balances, projected balances at the end of each year, and it shows you by the framework that we just discussed. So you can see here, the reserves are fairly flat, they're at just over $100 million. They do start to grow in year three, four, and five. So the biggest piece is our contingency reserves, or infrastructure renewal reserves story in the purple. So that's a combination of general sewer, water, IT, facility development, and fee. And why I wanted to put that caution at the top there is because, of course, well, these year one, year two, we probably got this ready place and we're ready to go. This plan is still a little bit moving forward direction. So while those reserves are wrong, just to be cautious that you may not have all the projects in there. So any questions on this?
Now, the reason why we have this up here is probably to give you a heads up as you go through the capital prioritization process, to have a sense of what funds are out there. And so obviously, there are projects like fire station and public works that are coming down the pipe. So we have our 20-year plan and the funding strategy and models in May, so we can begin to overlay some of these things and see the gaps in terms of taxation base. And so this provides the context for that conversation.
So debt analysis. So outstanding debt at the end of 2015 was 47.8 million. These are the assets that we've borrowed against. These are the total borrow. This is what was outstanding at the end of December. These are annual repayments, and that's the last payment year. So right now, our debt payments, pretty full interest are about 4.8 million a year. Yes?
Debt analysis, do we, how does the RDN fall into this? Like, do we?
It's a city and municipal.
Okay, so, but we use the RDN's capital to borrow against that. Do we, like, how does that work with regards to, like, for example, a sewage treatment plant?
Okay, the sewage treatment plant is the RDN asset they borrow for. But when the city borrows, they have to go through the RDN. It's a process thing.
Yeah. So why do we go through the RDN to borrow is the question? And how much, is that the same amount of number? So, and that's my question, is that on addition to what we have there, or is that included in there?
Okay, so a couple of questions. So I'll start with the easy one. Why do we borrow through the RDN? It's how it's legislated to be. And so it's a process we, through the MFA model, we have a shared risk. And right now, we all flow through our RDNs. And so you'll notice that the MFA board is largely made of RDNs. The funding capacity, although, is somewhat a little bit different. So we have our own funding capacity, which is this piece. RDN has its own. But for a project that RDN takes on, that we benefit from, debt service would impact us through a requisition. So if they are building a treatment plant and we are part of that service, they will collect money from us to pay for that. However, that does not count towards our own borrowing capacity here, but it hits us through requisitions and taxation. Okay.
Council plan.
No, I didn't have a question.
Okay, Councilor.
Thank you. The NAC loan started, how long is the loan was added?
For 20 years.
20 years? In regards to the VICC, if someone knocked on the door right now, walked in and said, here's 20 mil, I want that, were we legally allowed to do that? In effect, was that created for that happen? Thank you.
So we're talking scenarios, right? If someone walked in and...
Can we legally sell it?
It's our asset.
Okay, so the answer is yes.
The answer is yes.
I have a question concerning the water treatment plant. I'm really confused about this. There was a, when the decision was made to build a water treatment plant, there was no, I don't recall there ever being an alternative approval process to borrow long-term beyond five years. Am I mistaken?
Yeah. Yeah, there was, and three people signed it. Myself being one of them.
Right, because the discussion at that time was actually, was actually the question could have been asked, do you do it or not? Okay, thanks.
What the parquet that says total borrowing 2.7 million, outstanding 925, annual payment 186, and it's debated out this year, how does that possibly?
We're actually going to count the full amount this year, and we will take it from reserves. Yes, good on.
When you're talking parquet, you're referring to the, you're referring to the one under Giant Pearl Plaza?
It's the Harborfront Parquet, isn't it?
The Harborfront Parquet.
That raises a interesting dialogue that relates to the annual payments of 186 for the parquet, and we've chosen to take our reserves to pay the outstanding amount. Which projects, for example, or the debt analysis, which ones suggest that we should take that strategy, given that in the next 11 years, we're going to spend approximately $26 million on VICC, pay a $20 million debt? So at what point do you, or is there a point? And I realize that through the MFA, the interest is reasonably insignificant, I mean, 1.75 or 1.5, so wherever we borrow at. But at the end of the day, if we have a very low debt ratio in the city, and if we have significant interest that we're paying, when you just add up that column, those columns, is there ever a point in time that we would suggest that we should be paying off, paying down some of our debt? As opposed to just carrying the payments over the full year period?
So the way the MFA model is built is shared risk. One of the reasons why we get very low interest is because the risk is shared amongst all municipalities across. And so part of the model is that you are penalized for paying your debt down as an individual. So as a city, if we decided we were going to pay down one of these loans, we have to take into account that when MFA went to the market to find the money, several of us several of us, but not just together, there's one. So if one of us is pulling out, there is a penalty for doing that. Because then that acts against the shared responsibility. Doesn't mean we can't do that. In the municipality, we can do an analysis that says, given what we're serving and the penalty, if it's advantageous for us to pay that down, we'll do that. And so, but we don't follow the same way you would do a home or in the private sector where you say, oh, all of a sudden I can pay this down, so I can cut down interest and stuff like that. There's a little penalty that goes with that process. However, the MFA itself does once in a while pay off some of these tranches of debt. So when we go and borrow from them, they take a little bit of the money, put it in a reserve and invest it. So if the investment for that tranche is doing so well, that their calculation, they can actually pay off the entire tranche, they would actually do that on our behalf and say, this was supposed to be paid off in the next six years. We have enough to pay off now. So they do that. So we are not as flexible as an individual municipality to respond in the way we would do in the private sector.
Okay, just one clarification.
Sorry, I will probably have another question. Should I pay more?
Just one more clarification. This debt is the only non-MFA debt we have is the parquet. It's actually through the Royal Bank. And the reason that we're paying it off early is because we received money. When we sold the airspace, really, we didn't put it in Nanaimo Center. We received some money that we put aside and when the term comes up, we're making a lump sum payment.
Counselor. So the Nanaimo Aquatic Center would fall under what? It's be paid off in three years, which is a total of about 1.3 million.
All of their debt is MFA. All of their debt is MFA. So exactly what Victor was explaining. We take out the debt, we don't have the flexibility to get it.
So, well, with that one, it looks like you're going to have 1.6 million in flexibility because you're only going to be paying 1.3 million and there's 2.1 over the next three years.
Which one are you going to be paying?
The NAC.
The aquatic center? Right, so our term ends in 2020, so in four years.
Okay, so that's the term.
That's the term, that's the last year we make a payment. Yes.
Well, that's the last year you make a payment. So if you're looking at annual payments of 4.65, you're still going to owe 1.6 million.
Oh, right, right.
So there is another piece to this whole model, which has to do with the debt reserve piece, which we draw from, or MFA draws from for the last payment, and that comes into play.
Okay.
So just, like, while we're making those payments, those, that money we pay them and they is actually being invested. We would have a return on it. That's why it is a low cost. And that's all calculated. So I know the numbers.
Thank you. Given that the parquet is not, is the only non-MFA one and it's the RBC one, and you mentioned that, so we're paying this off as a result of property sales of the airspace, which I assume is that airspace sale, the money went into property reserve acquisition and the gap. Who made the decision to, who made the decision to use those funds to pay off the parquet?
Counselor Bessler is asking, when that money was put into that reserve with that intention, whose decision was it to use that strategy?
Now, I would have, I don't have the history to buy sale, so I may have to look into.
I'm going to say, I'm going to tell you. It was the Director of Finance makes that decision, made that decision.
Just approximately 350,000.
So presumably with the recommendation to council to make the decision to take money out of property acquisition reserve to pay this off in its entirety?
I'm not sure.
So, through the chair, that's a good question. I'm going to go back and look at it. The process that we ideally follow is that decision to come here, to be made. But assuming that was made before, I'll look into how that process was followed up.
Thank you. And the reason that I ask that question is because oftentimes if we, we will vote in favor of adopting the budget, didn't realize necessarily the minutia in every line item. And then you find out later, well, no, no, you adopted the budget. You approved, you approved this. I don't recall approving this method for this item. And I still want to be caught saying, well, you approved budget, so you approved the, you approved the decision to... You know what, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree with you and I'll bring this back as part of the next conversation.
Thank you.
Ms. Sanders.
Yeah, I think I wanted to take the opportunity to just make the statement that both Victor and I are looking at the policy suite that we have for finance and budgeting and reporting. And I think there's, while we have a lot of policy things in place, there are some gaps and we can up our game. And that's what Core Services is going to tell us as well, is having sort of more standardized, specific budget policies that are endorsed by councils. So everybody knows it's covered with my authorities, it's covered with the director's authorities, and that the decisions about capital are being made in the right place and he was fully informed. So definitely use those comments under advisement.
Okay, any other questions before we move on?
It was mentioned with respect to the, with respect to the paydown of the, of that asset, the parquet I gave, that the money would be coming from property acquisition reserves. The sale of property doesn't, isn't that what you said, Counselor Bessler?
That is what I said because I assumed that property acquisition dollars would have been used to purchase that by nothing. So when we, when we sold that, that is what I said, yes.
Right, so I'm trying to understand, when the property is sold, the contributions don't, or do they automatically go into the property acquisition reserve account?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And is that a property reserve? Yes, yes. Okay, any other questions before we move to the next slide? So debt analysis again. This is our current, this is our current projected annual commitments to repay the full interest down here. This is actually our limit. And this is per the community charter, there is a formula for that. Our current debt servicing limit is 34 million dollars. And we are at about 14% of our current limit.
And then obviously, once we pay down the whatever the million on the parquet, and in 2020, we are, we've paid off the NAC and et cetera, et cetera, and so on and so forth. 14%, is there a, is there a comparator? And I know it's apples and oranges and all that stuff, but of similar sized communities or that have grown at a similar rate or pace as the city of Nanaimo the last 20 years, that have any lesser debt rate than, I mean, that's pretty low.
Now, my first presentation I made to you when I got here was a comparator of this. And we were the lowest amongst the 12 that we compare with. And I remember we having a conversation about implications of that. We can, I can certainly recollect that comparison. But debt use is a function of a number of things. One is tolerability for community for using debt. Some other cities like Renate, they have a policy that says we will never use debt, so we don't, so we have zero. For us, I think we were at a low rate because we practiced before that we only do this for very long term assets. And that speaks into the impact on your taxes because then you are building most of your capital back from cash. So you are taxing to build long-term assets. Then the impact to that is that there's inequality that's going on because the present community or residents are paying for the future group. And that's a, that's a conversation that we'll have as part of the debt service or the debt policy. So we can have a sense as to what tolerable for council and for residents. But as of now, the last presentation we made in September, October, we were the lowest in terms of debt, amongst the comparable. Thank you.
So further to that question, has the, has the City of Nanaimo Council ever declared that we will, that we will cap the maximum annual debt servicing at a certain amount?
No.
We can search the database back.
Yeah, and I've looked for that because that was my first, my first spot. And a part of the recommendation we make is basically to have that. We, what's the right spot for us to be at? And so from what I've researched, we don't. Best practice is to have that where you say, if the province says we can borrow up to 35 million, we are only going to use 50% of that, if that's the right spot. And then you work around that as part of your process. The, obviously what we have to understand is debt is a fixed cost, right? So when you have fluctuations in your revenue and you have this fixed commitment, then it tends to impact on the operating costs because now you have a commitment that you can't walk away from. So those are the modules we have to kind of walk through as we look at the policy side.
I want to just supplemental that. So the question would be, you know, there would be folks that would look at that and say, wow, we could double or triple our annual debt servicing without ever approaching our maximum available. Yet I know of other communities that say, we will not enter into any new debt until some of these other ones are retired.
Ms. Bessler.
Thank you. And to that point, that would sound to me like a 20-year, 25-year plan. That you know that when we make an investment in a significant infrastructure, that it's not just the capital to build it, but it's the operating money to operate it. And then we would know once these things all retire that, so that's where that whole plan for me fits in, to know... And I just want to say, I want to compliment because the manner in which, the years that I've been sitting here, this, this presentation and previous, to me is clear and succinct and efficient. And it's framed, the whole framing of this, to be able to have this discussion about debt analysis and the ratios. And where we, where we are is critical in our timeline path moving out. And so I just really want, you know, Deborah and Victor and your whole team, like, this is absolutely terrific information. And I really appreciate having this discussion because I've never had this framed discussion like this before. So thank you.
We're going to let you move to the next slide.
There's method to our deadness. Okay, here's the next thing. So in the 2016, 2017 plan, we do have new debt in there at this point in time for this plan. And that's for the placed operations building expansion and for the well clocks access provision. Both of them are not year one, but later. And so this will come up again when we give the next budget cycle.
I'm not sure who will make the best equipment to respond, but in well clocks access, at a 6 million dollar, or in 2018, like, in 2018, there seems to me to be some confusion as it relates to, and I don't know if we're permissible to have this conversation, but I think everybody knows that it's the trestle or an alternative of access into that site. In previous discussions like this, financial planning studies, it was, well, if it's this one, it's six, and if it's this one, it's six. Either way, it's six. Is that still factual, that if it's trestle or ground without bridge or anything, that it's still six or six?
We don't know that at this point. So we're in the process of putting a program together to look at alternative accesses to that site and the extension of Front Street. So we don't know the answer whether the 6 million dollars would be completely used up if we found an alternative access.
That's all I need, thank you.
There is an access study being done now with our partners. And it looks at the roadway and a number of other ones. And that's our little figure figures. What does that do?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're still have to present that to the committee.
Victor, thank you, Chair, through you to Deborah. Would it be fair or correct to say, Deborah, that new items could be added to this new debt list depending on the results of our deliberations regarding capital projects and priorities? I'm seeing a yes for Ms. Sanders. Thank you.
So let's talk a little bit about grants and private contributions. We already did a little bit, the theater expansion at this point in this plan. It's wholly funded from grants and private contributions. We'll review that again during the next budget cycle and talk about that more. The Nanaimo Yacht Club waterfront walkway is planned in 2017, a total budget of 1.3. We are funding 671 from our community taxes reserve. And we are getting, are receiving funding, it's actually partnership with the Nanaimo Yacht Club. The Sir Roxman Marina Field Lighting, of course, council just approved that, a total budget of 325 with 150,000 dollars for private contributions and grant. Yes?
Port Theater Expansion, ideally, we hope, we pray that we're going to get 12.6 million dollars funded through grants and private. But the city has committed 4.6 million dollars if they don't get funded. So where does that 4.6, what year does that fit into in our plan? And has that been taken into account for the rates that you have in here?
So through the chair, the conversation that council is having right now is not reflected here. And so if you, if you go back to the resolution on the table, there are conditions there that must be met. We haven't reflected those conditions here. Those are going to detect when 4.6 is committed.
Okay, so because I think in previous years we had a committed, so we're not, so it could fall, if it falls in 2017 or 2018, the rates could go up?
No, because we, if you remember the conversation we had, we, the strategy was to begin to, to put away funds in an reserve for that. When that happens, it will not impact our taxes, but it will come from, from a reserve.
4.6 million dollars?
Yeah.
So if you remember the conversation we had, I had actually made a recommendation that it would come from the community waste fund.
Yes.
And then we backed off and saying we needed to work through the conditions first. And then we'll talk about the funding strategy at time.
Okay.
So next is Counselor Yelich, followed by Counselor Bessler, followed by Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you. In regards to the walkway in front of the Nanaimo Yacht Club, what's PILTS?
Payment, annual taxes. And we receive that money from the Nanaimo and from the port authority.
So in other words, I just when I see that, I'm thinking taxpayers' money in a river walkway that seems pretty good in line view in front of the Yacht Club. So in other words, taxpayers aren't paying for the Nanaimo Yacht Club?
Well, it's money that the city received on behalf of taxpayers from the port authority. And we put it in a reserve and we spend it on waterfront projects. And we put it in a reserve and we spend it on waterfront project.
And okay, I don't know.
But it's not coming from taxation, if that's your question.
Yes, and is that best usage of dollars?
It's only used.
What's that? Oh, agree. Okay. Wow.
Councillor Bassett.
I was going to talk about the Port Theater expansion and the manner in which it's presented as funding private contributions, but I believe that Monday night later. But I do need to, the PILTS, the Payment Nul of Taxes. So what is, what's the amount that's in the payment in lieu of taxes now? Because we can carry those monies over and...
We do, it goes into an account. It's about $400,000 a year. And the current balance is... 1.8. So 1.8 is the opening balance for this year. We're projecting we'll receive $400,000. And this year, we're going to fund the wellcocks access design stage for 195,000. The departure base seawall and utility project is receiving money from this reserve. And the waterfront enhancement strategy is receiving money. So usually, it's for waterfront development projects.
Thank you. And so if we're... And the reason for the question is because we're discussing a potential $6 million access to the wellcocks. But there's work to be done to determine if there's altered... Is this study, consulting study for 200, gonna tell us what our alternatives are? Is that why we're doing this study? Or is it because we have identified alternatives on the assumption that C-SPAN is leaving and that there may be a ground floor entry versus a higher floor entry? So I just want, like, do we need, are we ready to spend then? We are ready? Okay, thank you. And then... The study money. That's what that money is.
It's a more in-depth study of our preferred route, which is the road. So preliminary design stage, so we have a better sense of what it'll cost. Plus a look at the trestle and a look at three other access routes going all the way down with the feedback from Seineville and the Port Authority. So everybody has their preferred routes. But we're looking at each of them to understand what the costs would be, the timing on them, so you can budget.
And thank you. So that hasn't gone up to tender or anything yet? Thank you. So will we discuss with or without rail, given that C-SPAN is moving? Will we discuss what, in terms of reference? If rail were not present, what that difference would look like for access and egress? If rail is present, what that will look like? Are we going that far with it? And it may be premature to ask the question. If it is, I apologize.
Certainly, the RFP is looking at with rail in place. We haven't identified at this point with rail removed. But definitely it is with rail in place because that's the condition that we're facing today.
Like the removal of rail is probably quite a medium to long, like five plus years out. Even if you were to see it move away, then removing the rail, remediation of the land and stuff would take a long time. We can certainly add in that factor, though, to the study.
I won't belabor it, but I would not, not, I would prefer that we do because I would not not want to make the assumption that rail is going to be there forever and we spend X millions on one route because it suggests it's the most appropriate for the next five years or seven or whatever it might be. But it might not be the most appropriate for the next ten years. And I'm guessing that that build-up comprehensively will be a long-term plan. So I would not want to, you know, be, however it goes, anyway, sound foolish at the end of the day and not know what our options are if we're with them. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Next one is councillor Brennan, followed by councillor Hall.
No.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you. How do we determine how much we get for the PILTS?
It's... That's a tricky question. I don't want to put you on the spot.
That's okay, I'll give a summary through the chair. Their B C assessment does a grant rule. And so they estimate the value of the land. And then the federal government, provincial government, whichever bodies, stakeholders in there as well, use those values to, in effect, give us what they would have paid or an estimated amount of what they would have paid had they paid taxation, had they been taxable. So it comes from information from B C assessment. And then I'm not exactly sure where the rates are, but it's supposed to approximate what they would have paid in property taxes. So kind of around about.
Supplemental to that, does that include water lots adjacent to Headland?
I'm, I'm, I actually don't really answer to that. I'm not sure if I can certainly find that out.
Because we've got a tremendous amount of property. What we think is real land is not real land. It's filled water lots. Stewart Avenue is full of them.
I actually believe there is, and depending upon who has the rights to the lots, if it's private, then they are taxed. But if it's the Port Authority or an organization like that that has ownership, then it would fall under the Payment Nul of Taxes.
Right, so we've got lots of properties along there that we think are properties and in fact are, in fact are filled water lots. And they're paying the Port Authority for these. And we've got constant renewals and reassessments of those properties. That's what I refer to as the five-years prize package. And in five years, they're being reassessed. And I know there's been some very significant reassessments over the last couple of years. One property at 75%, another property at 150%. So how do we follow that? In order to ensure that we're being compensated properly by the Port Authority or through the PILTS?
We'd have to investigate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I can answer a question right now for the conservative.
Most question?
Just as a follow-up. Are we completely beholden to the provincial or whatever the authority is for assessments on the port properties? Because it's my understanding that that number hasn't increased for decades. So if, I have to make an assumption that the values, just like residential properties, wherever they may be or whatever, seemingly increase on an annual basis. So I have to make an assumption then that port's properties, unless they're sold off, which they can't do actually, anyway. I don't think that that number has changed very much. So over decades, how, when was the last time we increased the assessment?
So all I do is see that number change for a while because we've been agreement. We've got a quality of $400,000. The question I asked was to compare what your assessment, the box would say we should get. And there was a little bit of a difference there. But because we have this agreement that runs out this year, I think, so we should be going back into another negotiation of what that number is gonna look like.
Yeah. So if we have an agreement with the Port Authority and the assessment is really to give us validation of whether or not we're seeing the ballpark or not? And I'm not sure in what format the agreement that we have with it is. If it's a policy or if it's an agreement that's dated that will be for 10 years or 15 or 20 or however long it is. Is there a condition or a clause in there that would say not less than what the assessment authority? So it's this, it's X. So whichever amount is greater. If the authority comes back and says, you should be getting $520,000 or whatever the number is, and we're getting four on its assessed value because we've got an agreement, aren't we getting opposed?
So we have an opportunity to look into possibly a different way that takes into account those variations that we have now. The one that's running out is a free term.
So we get to restate our vows?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pass around for better or worse.
So when we use the word negotiations with the Port Authority on payments and lieu of taxes, how much leverage do we have? What is their obligation to pay taxes to us?
The way the act is written, because they are effective, they are really not on the hook to pay. So they are actually cooperating with us to provide us this funding. The leverage you have is what's on the table and how far the two parties want to see a common goal, whatever that looks like. That's what you're there.
So would have to be a fairly sort of round table, cooperative kind of negotiation. We certainly have no power to go in there and insist on increases or anything like that.
It depends what they want from you.
Yeah, maybe water. But I know we shut it off through the taxpayers at one point. But generally speaking, we don't have a lot of leverage.
Also grants and private contributions that we've talked about this a lot. The only northfield improvements, the construction this year, 1.4 million coming from the province. And the two grants that we applied for and asset management that we received and about $177 from the government E C N.
Thank you. Similarly, I don't know who will be answering this, but the Boundary Northfield improvements seem to have been delayed and met with a snag as it relates to the crossings. And that there's an increase to the crossing upgrades and improvements that we didn't budget for. And that's not a criticism, it's just that it's changed. Is there any update on that number and the proposed start date?
So no, we came back to council and we gave you that information on the increase. So the increase was about $600,000, which we were able to defer. So we're not actually paying that upfront when Boundary Northfield was constructed. That would be part of the project that would come into play if they've got a little quicker moving trains than they have right now. And we needed that preemption because it's all about preemption.
Did you say quicker or any?
Quicker. So at the present time, the Boundary Northfield project is out to tender, although we have extended it to tender for about a month so that we can digest what the resolution that came out of the R D N meant.
Thank you. And the call off. Does the tender include the arms that go up and down?
Yeah, it includes everything at the actual crossing itself. It just doesn't include the preemption that will go down on a number of other crossings.
And... And so has that tender gone back out?
It was out to tender, it remained out to tender, we have just delayed it. We have just put out a notice to all plan holders that it's been extended. We extend the closing deadline now.
Okay. Now, the 2016 financial plan and property tax bylaws. This is what we need to get to for the May 15 deadline. We need to identify new specific changes to what we've agreed today. We need it this week to be able, for us to be able to make the changes and sell everything and meet that May 15, draft the bylaw and reports and meet that May 15 deadline. Budget bylaw is what we're proposing at this point is that we would prepare it for council's review and approval for the April 18 meeting. And the May second meeting for the first three meetings. And then May second meeting would be the final with option. And this is what would support the property tax bylaw.
So the next, yes? In terms of the timeline there, people back aside, identifying any changes made this week. Maybe that council is in a position to identify some of those in terms of the capital prioritization in a couple of weeks. What's your deadlines here? Do you literally mean this week or you'd like it this week?
This week and probably this weekend or anything. Yes, please.
So there's two, I think there's two answers. My comment at the beginning where council should not feel pressured to finish the prioritization process because we can always come back and make changes. The May 15 deadline, we can't move. And so if council is able to do something before May 15, that's fine. If not, we'll still revisit the bylaw itself and amend it. So that's probably context.
And so we've had a conversation, I think Victor and I and senior manager, we've all had this conversation, which was endorsing the adoption of the existing budget, even though you're close on the capital projects prioritization and even though your core services is coming in. The reaction time to absorb that information and see what type of budgetary changes, I think, cannot be accomplished before the 15. And so if you're in that position a month later, then you can amend it. Two months later, you can amend it. So the less rushed approach is preserving the status quo, rolling over that budget and then bearing in mind that you probably will have some changes that you want to bring in a month or two. For example, increasing the amounts of monies that are available for some of your priority capital projects. I've been back and forth on that a lot, but I see the wisdom of Victor's recommendations. And I do support it.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you. I don't think there were any capital projects that could actually physically get started within 2016 anyways, right? I think it's, some of the stuff we have, I could see as planning and putting some finance money into design. But I think actual start of any capital projects isn't gonna happen in 2016. I mean, you want to anyway. Is that about right or?
Do you think that's a, you would think that's a fair assessment? But I said that if you had a priority and you wanted to proceed with that, you couldn't set aside money for the planning or design of the 2016?
Which is a key.
Most question?
Thank you. I think our strategic planning sessions and our capital planning sessions and our core services review and obviously the financial plan and obligations for May 15, that all of the requirements that we have should, and we have eight months remaining of 2016. And I would hope that we do not bypass the opportunity to consider capital projects for the future, which may result in a revisit or an amendment if necessitated to take advantage of the time. Because we all know that it's time. I wouldn't, because I would not want to be sitting here next March or April or whatever it is going, hey, we had this opportunity because our debt analysis revealed this and when, in fact, we might have been able to advance a project or projects or whatever it is. This year, with the paperwork that's required, with the stuff that has to get going, the behind-the-scenes stuff that, you know, you don't see going on to, so that you can hit the start button and have all the discussions. Because we don't do anything real quick and that's not a criticism, it just is what it is. So I wouldn't want to procrastinate. And I was hoping that we would have the core services review information in our hands for a couple of weeks when we entertained that possibility a year ago so that we might be able to advance something more in this term. And as we're getting closer and closer to the end of the term, which will be in a year from now, we're gonna be all in. from now, we're going to be all hotel, we're close, so I hope we don't be dismissive about opportunities when we have the knowledge of financial capacity, that we can do certain things potentially, and the sooner we get started, the better. And so that's just a statement or a humble opinion, but I hope we don't dismiss any opportunities as a matter of fact.
Well, we're literally 11 days into the second quarter of this fiscal year, so you certainly, you check in quarterly with your budget to make the adjustments that you need to make, you certainly have plenty of time to plan and start things. It may not be how we've normally done it, but we're one week into the second quarter, we've got three quarters left to be able to do things. So there's time, if you're motivated and you guys are clearing your priorities, staff can get moving on it.
Thank you.
So, the last piece of the presentation, and that's the next budget cycle, so the conversation is a great segue. So this is for the 2017-2021 financial plan. So of course, we need counsel direction. So what we've been looking for is the collection from the blueprint that you're working on, we take, use the current plans that we have, the official community plan, the transportation master plan, the cultural plan, we use these corporate plans for, to provide direction to staff in their next budget cycle. The next planning cycle has already started for infrastructure projects, because of course those programs, condition assessment programs, and project planning are ongoing. We have a 10-plus year planning horizon, we do condition assessment, maintenance information, current asset age and other information, we update scope of work timing and cost estimates for projects, we identify new projects, and we're doing business case and cost benefit analysis, particularly where we're looking at new or upgrades. So here's the timeline for the next budget cycle, and it has started. So May into June, we do, what we want to do is a long-term financial planning workshop with council, it's probably fit really nicely with the work that you're doing right now. We're going to have a 20-year funding capacity analysis for you to review, we're going to look at the status of the current ECC review, and hopefully we'll be informed by the blueprint. June to August, so basically at that point, we send out the budget package or budget information, direction to departments for them to prepare their budgets, and they need that direction. June to August, they prepare their budgets, so they prepare their operating budgets, they finalize their project budgets. August to October, finance does the review, we find, there's budgets that we actually are responsible for, we do analysis and preparation of the budget documents. So that happens in August to the middle of October. November, December is when we hopefully will have those budget review workshops with council. In December, I mean, the adoption of that additional budget that we did this year, so that departments can get on and get their work done. So that's the proposed timeline, I think that's my last one. Any questions?
Thank you. We fund other, other agencies, and unlike departments that bring their work plans and their budgets to us, their actuals and their provisionals and all of those things, for sometime, hopefully in the last quarter of the year that we're in, and then, is it possible that we can have, because you know, here we are, we're, and I get where we've come from, but in the last six months or so, with new people and all that, but we're compressed to make decisions when we get in, leading up to May 15th or 14th, or whatever the date ends up being. So when we're waiting for external agencies to provide us with their budgets of a million and a half, or whatever the number is, is there any way that we can insist people that we're funding with monies, present their 2017 budget expectations and asks in 2016?
Yes, we can do that from a process, our view with Deborah's team, what our work lines look like, but I've seen in other organizations where you roll out in such a way that that information is in front of council way ahead of this process, so you are aware this is coming out.
And, thank you. Does that require a motion or anything, or is that just a, an expectation that we can?
It is good practice, so it doesn't require a motion, we just follow up the staff and provide that information.
We'll double check any of the operating agreements or contracts between city and third parties to see what's specified in those as well, but it's certainly within the power of council to decide whether we want to do something.
Thank you, because if I understand correctly, we're seeing a financial review a week or so from now, of a third-party agency, are we not, like the, NEDC, are we going to, is it their AGM or something coming up? And is that when you'd see the financial reports from 2016 and 2017?
We'll be reporting on their previous fiscal year, I think they operate Jan 1 to 10/31, so we'll be reporting on 2015, and then sharing their budget for 2016.
Thank you, so that's my, that's my point, they'll be sharing their, any of those. Thank you. Counselor Holm.
Thank you. Thank you for the hour's presentation. Question I have, I should have asked on the first slide, when we had the revenues coming in, that includes other revenues, I don't even know where we are, like if it's the hotel tax, is that even around?
No.
And the casino revenue?
The casino money is.
Was part of that, no, is that?
Yes, it's the hotel tax we collected and we get over some.
And then go back to the hotel people.
Counselor Holm.
Thank you. Just looking back at our reserves here, the VI Fire Academy reserve, there's no additions or withdrawals happening, is that not happening anymore?
So, did you want to speak to them now, or?
So the Fire Academy is still proceeding, council made that decision late last year for us to continue.
But there's no additions or withdrawals in it? Does it just sit like that with $157,000 in it?
So, oh, I can explain.
Oh, that's a reserve, yeah, that's a reserve, yes.
So what happens is, we have a procedure for the Fire Academy where we budget expenditures and revenues, if there is net profit, we put it into that reserve to help fund the renewal of that infrastructure.
So you're saying we're not expecting any profit?
No, we don't budget for profit. Usually it's fairly small, but we don't budget for it, no.
Any other questions? Counselor Holm.
Thanks, Jim. Another question, just to comment, I want to echo what Counselor Bestwood said earlier, and that is a compliment to staff for the report that we've given, clarity of the information. For me, it's so beneficial to be reminded of the long-term planning that the city does and the staff does for us, as we look ahead with finances, because I sometimes think when people get their tax notice, they think this is something that we've just made up on the spot or on the fly as we go along. There is an awful lot of long-term planning and deliberation that goes into making those decisions about the numbers that appear on the tax rate, so appreciate the information we've received today and the work that you've done, Victor and your staff. Thanks, Deborah.
Counselor Holm.
Thank you. I'd echo those same words, and maybe those, not agent tenet, but senior people that are on the table, like maybe Counselor Brennan or Bestwood.
You bet.
No, it's, I'm really proud and honored to be here today for the citizens of Nanaimo and the work we've done, like we, a lot of the noise around us, of us, of course, has gone away with real hard work, that this council's worked harder, and Victor and Tracy and your staff, all of you. So as to the question I would have is, zero percent tax increase this year, and the number's reduced, when I first got a council a year and a bit ago, meaning reduced, has there been a timeframe, I guess, though, when the budget's been, to me, I'm proud of this budget, I'm proud of the minimal or no increase in taxes, before it was just seemed like reading a newspaper as a citizen my whole life, it seemed like just a rubber stamp, and my houses went up 2% every year. So I want to echo the good work we've done, a lot of people, we've campaigned on, we're getting, keeping taxes in check, and we're there this year, I hope we can keep it there. So this is a bit of corporate history, has it always been, or is it just an automatic increase? Because I'm proud of the work. I know some, I see some report, history of this report here, I'm looking, putting one in the spot, but I've been a resident here my whole life and been active, it seemed like.
Counselor Bestwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I certainly concur with the comments that have been expressed, as it relates to the information and how it's been presented and framed, and the opportunities that we have for this dialogue. Just for example, this document here is excellent, because I often wonder, what do we have in our reserves, which reserve, what classification is this reserve, what can this money be spent on, et cetera, et cetera, and so when I see, and I'm a visual person, so when I see, I'm visual because I have a terrible memory, I can't remember yesterday, so sometimes that's good. And I think that, to Counselor Yokum's comment, I think what we're seeing is a cultural shift in how we arrive at the finish line, and not starting at the finish line and moving backwards, just saying, well, that's just, this is what it is, this is how, this is how it goes, this is how we've always done it. And whenever there's change, there is pushback, there is this, there always, and so it creates its own negativity. And then you end up having to defend change, you have to defend how you're doing, what you're doing, and why, which is all good. And I think that, to Counselor Yokum's point, that the work that's being done, the efforts that have been made by staff in every department, and the leadership that we're receiving, is paramount to what we're going to see change over the next one to five years. It's not going to change overnight, and it will have some heartache, and there will be some pain, but with every pain or tragedy, there's always an opportunity, and I, if this is any evidence to me, the direction that the city's going, and to change the narrative of this council not getting work done, this council not working together, this staff and council, and council and staff not working together, I take that personally, and I take great exception to it. Because I don't think that this, the direction that the city is taking, yet, there's going to be some pain, and we've experienced some of it, but we are going in a great direction. I've never been more optimistic, positive, and confident in where we're going, and why we're going where we're going, and where we're going to be when we get there. So for everybody that's participated and contributed in the room with some pain, with some slack fest, this is a real good day, and this is a real good thing. And I think everybody should celebrate the fact that we're moving in a good direction with positive, positive feelings. So that's, that's my perspective on this financial plan direction, strategic plan direction, core services review direction, portfolio direction, city's direction. It's positive, I'd love to see some positive news as a result. Thanks.
I echo, I echo those same sentiments. In opening up my binder today, I kind of skipped over this first page several times, but the City of Nanaimo has received the distinguished budget presentation award, and they did that in January of 2015, for the 2015-2019 financial plan, and this award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and represents best practices in the field. We received that award in January of 2015, and that was the second time in a row. We had a very good foundation on which to start. I really do commend this group of staff, and many of you worked, were working on these budgets when, when we received these awards. And I think what I'm finding is, and I think some of the others are too, maybe the newer ones, I'm definitely understanding it better, and I don't know whether that's just because I've been here longer, it's not like I didn't come in with no understanding of budgets, but this is a very complex budget, and I really, really thank you all for taking your time to really find ways to make it clear to us, because we are the laypeople here, you're the experts in this particular budget. So thank you so much for the time that you have taken, for all your expertise, for all the ways that you work so hard on, you have to say. As Counselor mentioned, often people just feel like tax is something that slipped upon them, and taxes are for the benefit of everyone in our community, and it isn't a good idea not to have zero percent tax increase every year, because our city's growing, it's changing, it's a dynamic force, and we do need to move forward with the time. So I appreciate the help that you give to us to make the decisions that we have to make, I found this very clear this year, and it's been very, very helpful, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Our team there, crazy.
I can take no credit for it, it's entirely self-driven by each of these different directors, and they all have a lot of really great ideas, and they're coming forward with them, you're seeing Jack in the asset management, you're seeing Victor's team, they're all coming forward with new ideas, so it's driving itself.
Counselor Pratt.
We could be making a motion to adopt.
That's the next item, yes. So the next item, seeing no further discussion on the presentation itself, the next item was a motion on page nine, that council direct staff prepare the 2016-2020 financial plan bylaw amendment, and the 2016 property tax rates bylaw for approval at the next council meeting. So moved by Counselor Pratt, seconded by Counselor Bestwood. Is there any discussion on the motion? Thank you.
While I commend staff for taking direction from council and preparing a report that meets the instructions, I think, that you were given, I have to say, I'm disappointed in the budget, I'm not a strong supporter of it. The zero percent increase to me is inadequate funding for the services that we need, I think in a moment, we really need to look at inflation and at least keep up with that, or we start to move backwards. I think that we have, that this budget is too reliant on reserves, and that we will get caught by that in the not-too-distant future. I think that there's very little emphasis on the value of services that we provide, and I think there's too little emphasis on investment in those services. I do not believe that tax cuts help people who struggle to make ends meet. I think that investments in services help people who live in poverty, that they require the services that government provides for them, and that a budget that goes backwards in terms of spending and isn't careful enough to invest, is not a budget that's going to help those people. And for me, that's a disappointment, I think we have failed in that way. I know that there are people who are asking us to move along a poverty reduction plan that we can use here in C, and I think taking the perspective that decreasing taxes is the way to assist in a poverty reduction plan fails to understand the real plight of people who do live in poverty. So I won't support the budget, and those are the reasons why, it just doesn't fit with the values that I've. It just doesn't fit with the values that I bring to a budget exercise although I recognize that the staff is doing exactly what we asked them to do, and I commend you for that. And I thank the C A O for her work on this too, understanding that the majority of council had a vision, and that that vision came with instructions, and those have been met, but just not come out.
Counselor Bresker.
Thank you. Very respectful of the comments that were just made. And that's the beauty of our, coming from individual places within our value systems. For me, this is about a shift in how money is spent, not how much. And so I think the exercise that we're going through is where money has been spent, where money, and I think once we get through this first year of this exercise together, that we're undertaking right now, and trying to get that baseline, so we can find ourselves that baseline that we can move from, that we can finally bring our own personal perspectives to where we would like to see changes, adjustments, increases, decreases, maintenance, status quo's, all of those things, as our community changes. And our community changed dramatically in 2008. And the vital statistics, information that comes to us on a year, every second-year basis about child poverty in Nanaimo is the second highest, I think, in the country. And so is that the city of Nanaimo, or is that the province? Or is that a combination thereof, or where is that? And so, and I think we're doing on balance, because everything that we have to entertain is on balance. And we all are compromising something or other somewhere along the line. But that's why I think the strategic plan exercise that we're going through is so, such a critical piece. Environment, water, and, you know, the word that I hate the most, sustainability. But it's so key for us to get that baseline established, and then create from that baseline, instead of just continuing to add to what we've always done before, because that's what we've always done before. I think this is so key, this is such a critical point in how we're going to advance this city in the areas that Counselor Brennan identified, in the areas that our community is going to identify for us, and has identified for us, I think, moving forward. So this is, to me, this is, I know it's in a small room, I know there's only thirty people in it, but I find this session that we just had is going to, and I've always said, the budget, the financial, this is the most important document we have. This is the most important thing that we do. And this will continue to be the most important thing we do. And if we can learn from this exercise where we failed, that's fine. Failures are fine. If we weren't good enough somewhere, then we can get better at it. As long as we're willing to accept the fact that we didn't do very well over here, that's okay, and we won't know that until we put that 2020 hat on, looking backwards. But today, I think, is a hallmark day. Today, I think, is a great day for this advancement of this city, and everybody that's in this room. And everybody that's in this room can take their responsibility for where we're going to go tomorrow, and how we're going to get there. And I, this to me is the most positive exercise that we've gone through in the twelve years that I've sat here. And I look forward to the next two. And I look so forward to the progress that we're making, and I look so forward to the successes, that we aren't even going to realize it happened today when we made this draft pick today. Because we're not going to see the results of this draft picking for a couple of years. So, good on everybody, and I sure hope that things that we haven't addressed adequately enough for all of our lives, will be able to address over time in our term. So again, I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you, Counselor Bresker. We have Victor and M I D.
A couple of points that I'd like to make about the budget. I think what you have in front of you is a very, very, very good story. So, when you realize that with the zero percent increase, you're actually not cutting services.
Exactly.
You're actually enhancing some of your services. Number two, the issue of inflation. It's already addressed in the way that we determine the estimates for costs. So when we were doing our cost estimates, so if you take the issue of salaries, all the contracts in place, they have been accommodated in the number that is in front of you. If there are any contracts, that inflation piece has been actually put in place. There is growth in the community. We're getting $1.4 million in new revenue. That's coming out of growth, which takes into account the cost increments that are happening. If you look across into the future, there are no zeros, there are no zeros left, right? Which means the work that's done today is somewhat reflected into that future. And as we get closer and closer to each year, you are a little bit more reaper for that year that you work into. You have very healthy reserves that you have in front of you, that we are continuing to build or get a graph that showed it going up. So we're building on that piece going forward. The issue of how we use reserves, we will have a larger discussion about reserves as to what I asked when I got here, when is the reserve too much? We still have to answer that question from a policy perspective that says, do we have enough, do we have less? What's the magic number that we want? We will have that conversation going forward. But we are able to respond, as we speak today, to changes, one-time changes. We are not funding ongoing operations from reserve. There's not even one that we've done. It's one-time stuff, it's capital stuff, and that's a legacy practice that has been replaced from the past that came on. So, I just wanted to put that for context for council. The issue of specific programs that you would like to address, those who would like to hear from you, where they say, we would like to do this program, then we can do a business case going forward, and say, this is how this would be funded, this is how this would work, and that will speak to the various motivations that you have, or programs that you want to push going forward. But what you have today for 2016 is a very, very good news.
Thank you. Counselor Pratt.
Thank you, Victor. That was, that was good to know. All of that was really good information that is important for everyone to know. I see this budget as a very good budget because in December, we were given some very good reasons why we were able to adjust, how we were able to adjust it, where the savings came from, that still allow us to keep that 1% capital reserve piece in there, even though there's no 1% increase this year. There is an increase, it's just balanced off by other things that happen. The other thing is, and I don't think anybody's forgotten it here, but we are about to hear the results of a core review. And that is going to make a big difference as to how we move forward. And for us, it's a yes at this point, because we don't know what the results of that are going to be. And they are going to impact a lot of things, and hopefully for the better in our community. So I'm really looking forward to that. And then, if we can make some adjustments over the next six months to this budget that are good for our city, then we'll do it. And if we don't, then next year, we will do something. And although we are projecting for next year, what is it, three point?
Two point eight percent.
Two point eight percent? It may be a little more than that, it may be less than that. We don't know that, because this core review is definitely going to impact everything that happens from here on in. And we can do all the strategic planning we want, and all the capital prioritizing we want, but until we get that piece, and it's a crucial piece at this point in time, nothing else is going to really be set in stone. Moving forward, we will be able to set some things in stone. And so I'm really looking forward to that. And I think this is a great budget, and I'm really in support of it. And I think it's something that our community will be really happy with too, so thank you.
Counselor Ho.
Thank you. I'm going to support this budget because it's great that we have zero percent increase this year. I don't think our residents are expecting a zero percent increase every year at all. By any means, they know if things change and we want to improve our city, so budget's going to increase. But it's nice to get a break, especially for the business owners that get a break. You know, poverty is great, less taxes for somebody again in the housing market. It's good to know that they can see these. You know, I think an important part for our job is, you know, providing jobs and housing. So if we can keep our rates low, it's going to attract people into the market, and it's going to attract businesses into our community. It's important when they see that we are in a sporadic, consistent rate increases with our taxes. So I think this is all in all a great story, and I'm really happy to support it and that we can achieve this without losing any services going forward. So, I commend the staff.
Thank you. I have no further speakers, therefore call question, all who are in favor. Opposed, motion carries. No, the Counselor Brennan is opposed. So now we're going to move into the next item, which is Corporate Services, Home-Based Business Bakery at 5491 Rutherford Road. I'm going to be looking for, I was just going to suggest that we consider a five. So thank you. The next item of business is on the Corporate Services, and it's Home-Based Bakery at 5491 Rutherford Road. And the purpose is to inform council.
Your worship, I apologize for being late. I had a family issue, I'm sorry for being late here. Quite crazy out there after we have that door closed. Apologize.
Thank you.
But I heard you missed a very positive presentation.
So the purpose of this presentation is to inform council regarding statutes of only Bylaw 2011, number 4500 regulations as they pertain to home-based businesses, specifically in relation to concerns related to proposed Home-Based Business Bakery at 5491 Rutherford Road. Now we have three delegations. The first one is Ms. Candace Jones. And I'd like, I'd ask you to come up to the, up here, up front. And understand, the microphone pickup is over there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilors, staff to Friday, community members. My name is Candace Jones, and I'm here to address the issue put forth in Ms. Angela Chan's petition against the building permit 121-5238-5491 Rutherford Road. My hope is to clear the air of any uncertainty as to my intentions of moving my business from its current location to my home. Please bear with me, as I will address each individual point brought up in Mrs. Chan's petition and show how my home-based business complies with all the regulations and bylaws of the H B B. My intention of moving my business from its current location to my home is to shrink my business to a manageable size that I and my husband, Mr. Clay, can attend to. We ourselves are hoping to slow down and balance our family life with our business life, as right now, we are overworked and underplayed. The first issue I shall address is the concern over the traffic on Rutherford Road. Mrs. Chan speculates that the not arriving of my business, which is currently on Rutherford Road, in its current form, will cause an influx in traffic. Although I cannot personally do anything about traffic on Rutherford Road, by complying with the section 6.20.5 and 6.20.51 of the H B B regulations, which states that you are allowed ten trips to or away from the business each day, by complying with that regulation, I am staying within my rights. My intention is to sell local markets on particular days of the week, averaging no more than four or five days a week, meaning that my business at one trip to and one trip away is far within the regulations. When the transition occurs, any current customers of Bodie's Bakery will be redirected to local markets where they can continue to purchase our products. Also during the transition, I am expecting to find a decrease in my sales in my market, which is that when a business closes its doors. Any potential new customer will be found at the local markets and will associate with Bodie's at said markets. There will also be no signage on our property to entice customers to come for our home-based business. As for the issues concerning the shared access of 5491, 71 and 81 on Rutherford Road, our easement has been there for twenty years. It is twenty feet wide at its widest point, and tapers to fifteen feet. My truck is six feet, meaning that in three years, I have navigated our shared access with absolutely no incidents. As no customers will be accessing our property, I have no understanding as to why that would bear any, any bearing on whether or not I should be allowed to have my home-based business on my property. The second issue I shall address is the concern for potential noise, light and smell emitted from my home-based business. Mrs. Chan speculates that bakers start work as early as two or three in the morning, and claims that this is akin to someone working early five days a week in their garage. However, this is not the case. Fresh bread is my motto, meaning that I start work two to four hours before my market. Most of my markets are in the afternoon. As many of ours are in the afternoon, this means that I do not always have to get up at two or three in the morning. Also, if a building is properly insulated with R24 value insulation and two-by-six walls, when the doors are closed, the noise emitted is negligible, if none at all. I have brought with me today a soundbite of my current bakery with all machinery needed for the morning bake-off running. If you care to listen, you'll notice that the noise emitted from my current bakery does not exceed the regulations of the H B B. You will also notice that the traffic noise on Rutherford Road is much more disturbing.
Right here, we are at Bodie's Bakery. We're going to be doing a soundbite of what it sounds like at Bodie's Bakery at two o'clock in the morning. So I have the machines running. This is really, the only thing that makes noise in the bakery is those two mixers. Everything else is pretty quiet. But wait a minute, there's a condense oven that has a fan in it too. Okay, here we go. The oven's on, the mixes are on, all the noise equipment's going. We're going to have to close the door, and now we're outside. And I understand, twenty-five feet away from the bakery, and everyone can hear exactly how much noise is coming off. But wait a minute, I don't hear anything. All I can hear is traffic going. Wow, that's amazing.
Lights, my home-based business uses the same sixty watt to one hundred watt halogen lights found in your own home. The only light emitted from my home-based business is through two average-sized windows facing my inner yard. Smell, there is no homeroom in my own home-based business than mine. I too, in beginning this venture, was concerned with smell until I discovered an exhaust fed in air purification system. These systems are specifically designed to eradicate any exhaust or smells emitted from restaurants, and I plan on installing one in my home-based business. One particular one is made by a company named Sprint. The cost to us is roughly $60,000. However, we are going to install it for peace of mind for all parties. The third issue I shall address is the food waste slash pest control issues. Mrs. Chan claims that there are rats in the area, and she is fearful that this could be worsened, particularly by food waste and leftovers. I currently deal with pest control company at my retail bakery to keep the local rodent population under control. My intention is to continue working with them, and hopefully will eradicate our neighborhood rodent population issue. At my current location, as a retail bakery, I do not produce more than one bag of garbage per day. When I downsize and transition my property, my waste production will also reduce due to no retail aspect of the business. Any garbage produced will be stored in an airtight container that will be emptied and cleaned on a regular basis. and cleaned on a regular basis to comply with home-based business regulations as well as food safety regulations. Mrs. Chan's comparison of my home-based baking business to those she viewed is speculative. 452 square feet, which is much smaller than this room, is what we are allowed regardless of style or componentry. Our 452 square foot home-based bakery is also discreet. It is not visible from the road. Once our current landscaping is completed, our building will be discreetly tucked behind our bamboo hedge. The minimalist design of the exterior of the building is designed to match that of our house and will look as if it is always being there. As for the height of our building, considering that we are using our existing accessory building, the height, which currently does not exceed 12 feet, will remain the same. Mrs. Chan, through her petition, refers to our home-based business as a production bakery, which in the city bylaw glossary is the use of a building for a large-scale bakery for the purposes of production of baked goods for retail or wholesale to the final consumer or other retailers. However, our intention is not to do, is to do small-scale production for farmers' markets only, not retail sale or wholesale to other businesses. We are basing our business model on two other home-based baking businesses, which were Slow Rise Bakery on Gabriel Island as well as Well-Bred in Chulmanis. Both, although small home-based businesses, do use commercial equipment to bake for farmers' markets around Nanaimo, we intend to do the same. Mrs. Chan's disregard for factual evidence confounds me. How can one citizen be allowed to bully another and cause such undue stress and anxiety over speculation? As a private citizen of Nanaimo BC, I would like to offer suggestion to counsel's consideration in regards to petition and complaints brought forth to counsel on subjects of similar matter. Communicative transparency is beneficial to all parties involved in said complaints and would alleviate undue stress, anxiety, or anger and allow for an objective and cooperative conversation between counsel, complaintist, and complainer. Please in future, consider the sensitive nature of people and provide proper notification and time to all parties to respond, as I was not legally informed of a petition or a meeting. Thank you.
You don't go away. Let me ask some questions of counsel. Any questions of counsel? Seeing none, you say? Okay, that's right.
So I'm just, I was just wondering, will, will you, will your business generate more waste than a normal, you know?
Yeah.
And, and so will it be picked up by the public services?
No, we will be delivering our own waste as we do now to, as we do now.
So you take, okay, and you're six foot down?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So the, the water and residue when you're rinsing out your machines and stuff, is that gonna, imagine? I mean, I'm just imagining.
No, as, as, in order to get a building permit, you must go through city planning and that has to be taken into consideration for VHA regulations. There will be grease trap, all of that is in our building plan.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So, am I kind of making the assumption that you're closing your retail business?
We are closing our retail business.
Okay, so this isn't, because I think under the previous assumption that we had that this was gonna supplement your retail, you're cooking at this facility for your retail business.
No.
So you're, you're just getting out of it?
No, we're, we're closing. It's time for us, we have young kids and we'd like to spend more time with them. So this gives us an opportunity to do both the family life as well as owning the business. Right now, we don't have much time for our kids and we think it's unfair to them as well as to us.
Yeah, that, this clarifies something I think at discussion we had last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions? Thank you. Motion to receive the delegation. Counselor Thorpe, followed by Counselor Pratt. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. I have a question for staff and that is with respect to, with respect to 6.02 in our staff report on page 12. I noticed that smell is not one of the items covered under the restrictions with respect to, or the guidelines with respect to home-based businesses.
Um, your worship, there is, looks like it's being excluded there. The author excluded, but there is a point in our bylaw that says the noxious odor is overdue emitted from home-based businesses and not permitted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we have a second delegation and that's Ms. Angela Chan. For the record, you may.
My name is Angela Chan. I live at 5471 Rutherford Road in Nanaimo. And before I begin my presentation, I just want to note that farmers' markets generally tend to be a seasonal activity between May and October. And in the other six months of the year, there's usually two or three a week. So I want to thank the city of Nanaimo for preparing the report on the proposed bakery at 5491 Rutherford Road in such a timely manner. I spoke previously at the committee of the whole meeting on March the 14th, 2016, expressing our concerns about this proposed bakery, requesting a building permit be withheld. Today, I am asking counsel to review the current home-based business bylaws. According to the city's report, the home-based business bylaws were introduced in 1993. In the time since they were originally introduced, there have been economic changes in Nanaimo and shifts in expectations of citizens towards greater consultation and elaboration with their municipal government. When the home-based business guidelines were established, it seemed the original intent was to help small mom-and-pop operations provide family employment and income. The businesses would complement the residential use of the neighborhood. By far, the majority of home-based businesses support families and live in harmony with their neighbors. The intent of home-based businesses was to move from a small start to a larger commercial or industrial business while keeping overheads low. How many home-based businesses actually expand into larger premises? Are statistics kept? I want to suggest very few rather the opposite is true, as with the production bakery at 5491 Rutherford Road. Current home-based business bylaws have enabled these production, commercial business to move into our neighborhood under the guise of a home-based business. This proposed bakery does not complement the residential nature of our community and reduces property values. In the report, the city states 41% of all business licenses are for home-based business. Do these businesses help the city develop economically and provide employment? Typically, they can employ one person. Does the city keep statistics as to what percentage of the 41% are starters versus established businesses moving into their homes? On March the 14th, I expressed fears that by allowing a production bakery into a residential neighborhood, this could set precedent for other commercial businesses to follow. The city needs to vigorously defend and protect the residential nature of our neighborhoods from commercial businesses by revising home-based business bylaws to include community input in the decision-making process. And I do note at this point that Ms. Jones mentions the other similar bakeries. One is on Gabriel Island and one is in Chulmanis. There are no other bakeries like this operating in Nanaimo. Under the current home-based business guidelines, the city is not required to notify the neighborhoods as a proposal for a home-based business has been received. This is wrong. Home-based businesses have a direct impact on local neighborhoods and sometimes far weaker. However, under the current bylaws, local residents have no mechanism to have input unless they directly approach the city council. The dogmatic application of the home-based business bylaws precludes any decision on a case-by-case basis. In 2016, our society demands and expects our government to be open, transparent, and inclusive. Occasionally, a proposal comes along that does not fit your typical quiet, unassuming home-based business, as in the case of this proposed bakery. This would suggest extra care and due diligence would be required on the part of the city. No one from the city informed us, even though there is no direct access to 5491 Rutherford Road. Access is through an easement, 15.2 feet wide, and a single entry point shared by myself, Mr. Baker, and the proposed bakery. Mr. Baker could be subjected to 10 extra vehicle trips daily going past his property. The city knew about the easement but did not consider it significant to notify us. In the report, the city notes the easement agreement does not prohibit use for business. The report auto states the easement does not directly involve the city. If that is the case, who is responsible for monitoring any violation? Our easement agreement clearly states not to park any vehicle or leave shuttles upon the easement. Already easement violations have occurred, such as parking and obstruction. Who will resolve this? We discovered the applicant had applied to the city for a building permit to build a production bakery from the city's What's Building in My Neighborhood website. Six weeks after the application was received. I first contacted the city on February the 1st and was asked, how did you find out? Was this a secret to be kept from the neighbors? By the time we contacted the city, it was too late for us. It seemed that a decision had already been made to approve BP 121-523, a production bakery, although the permit had not actually been issued. In our subsequent discussions with the city, officials from the planning department made it clear there was no room to have a discussion as the application met home-based business guidelines. Why this production bakery meets home-based business bylaws rather than I zoning has never been explained to us. Our environmental concerns and the business moving into our RSW neighborhood all dismissed as it met home-based business guidelines. This was recited to us on a number of occasions. Under the present home-based business guidelines, there is no room to look at the scope, the intent, and the scale of the proposed business. Here we have a self-described commercial production bakery moving into our RSW neighborhood. When we first raised concerns, no one had been to inspect the site, but we were told it met home-based business guidelines. A site inspection should have occurred before making the decision to grant a building permit. Once the business is approved and licensed, who monitors the number of vehicle trips, food and waste disposal, disruptions at night, and generally that the business is run according to the conditions on the license? There is a bylaw that controls business trips at night, but none that controls hours of operation. Bakers traditionally bake at night and what about the night and light and noise? The report states the applicant will be required to state how they can meet home-based business bylaws. Will it be made public and who will be responsible for enforcing the bylaws? In today's tough economic climate, it is quite feasible. The city will be confronted again with a business that meets home-based business guidelines as it is in fact a commercial business. The city needs to do more to protect the residential nature of our neighborhoods. Thirty people, taxpayers, within a block radius signed a petition proposing this bakery. These people do not want a production bakery in our neighborhood and they are concerned that the approval of this commercial business will allow others to follow. In conclusion, we purchased our homes in our present RSW neighborhood, believing its residential nature would be protected from encroaching commercialization. We are asking the city to review the current home-based business bylaws and to establish a public consultation process to ensure this does not happen in another neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to receive the delegation. Counselor, that's correct, followed by, considered by counsel for us. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? The next allegation is Mr. Brian Wallace.
I'm not a public speaker, so I'll have to read notes, sorry. Your worship and counselors.
Just name, name and address, sorry, please.
My name is Brian Wallace. I live at 5384 Vincent Place in North Nanaimo. My property board is on the west side of the subject property for which approval was being sought to operate a commercial bakery. It would be redundant for me to discuss at length valid concerns already expressed by Ms. Chan and Mr. Baker, other than I will say I'm in full agreement with their assessments and concerns. I will however mention a few. They include noise, traffic congestion on a very busy thoroughfare, traffic safety, compared property values, excessive waste, and garbage in general, deterioration of the neighborhood. My concerns, in addition to the obvious disruption in the neighborhood this bakery has and will continue to create, is the apparent arbitrary application of bylaws, regulations, and policies of the city of Nanaimo in this matter. On the city websites, first point, on the city website, background section of home-based businesses, a statement that home-based businesses will be, quote, "The nature and type of business will best complement the residential use of the neighborhood." To date, before I believe a business permit has even been issued, I note the following. Several months ago in the fall, I believe it was, the owner of the property got a stand in Cedars. I would guess 10 to 15 trees cut down by Davy Tree Service. I've lost my privacy and noise levels have increased dramatically from Rutherford Road. I believe this is to make way for a parking lot. Hold on, I'm not sure. Could someone explain to me how this will complement and how it is complementing the residential nature of the, of the neighborhood thus far? Is not. Second, section 6.20.4 of the HBB regulation states, "The home-based business shall not discharge or emit odorous, toxic, or noxious matters or vapors, heat, glare, noise, vibration, smoke, dust, effluent, or other emission hazards, electrical interference, or radiation across indoor apartment." Mr. Clay is moving his commercial ovens from a commercial location on Rutherford Road to his home. Can someone explain to me how a bakery can operate without emitting smoke or odor, please? As it stands right now, I cannot keep my windows open, and this is a deter, if I cannot keep my windows open in my bedroom because the smoke from their wood-burning stove disrupts our sleep. Third, the agenda for today's meeting, on the agenda for today's meeting, Mr. Stewart, city planner, has written a report that suggests that the application will go forward. Of note in this report, Mr. Stewart states that the applicant will no longer be able to operate as a commercial bakery, but instead must operate on a reduced scale as an HBB. And I'm not being flippant here. Commercial is defined as concerned with or engaged in commerce. Bakery is defined as an establishment that produces food baked in an oven such as bread, cookies, pies, etc. Mr. Clay will be baking goods by his own admission for sale to the public. By definition, it is a commercial bakery. One cannot alter the definition of what Mr. Clay is admittedly doing to suit the definition of a home-based business, which appears to be exactly what is happening. And can you explain to us what operate on a reduced basis as an HBB actually means? How is it monitored and by whom? Is the owners on the taxpayers? As a final point, a production bakery according to bylaw 4500 is to be zoned industrial with the provision for R1 zoning based on compliance with the HBB definition. I've reviewed bylaw 4500 and note that crematoriums in composting facilities are zoned industrial. And I say this in all sincerity, by extension, what can block me from having a crematorium or composting facility on a residential property if it meets the criteria offered? or composting facility on a residential property if it meets the criteria offered to Mr. Clay under the guise of an H B B? In closing, I suggest the only reason this application is legal is that it supposedly meets H B B conditions. However, for the reasons stated above, we do not believe it does meet H B B requirements. Thank you.
Any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to receive the report. Second by my Councilor Thorpe. All is paid. Post. Motion cares. And at this particular point, according to the agenda item, there is no motions required, no recommendations, other than to receive the report. Motion to receive the report. Motion by Councilor Hong and second by Councilor Brennan. Any discussion? Councilor Beswick.
I would like to compliment the three delegations for the manner in which they made their presentations. Respectful and thoughtful and succinct. Raised some questions, of course. There's always the pro and the con. And in this particular case, although there's no recommendation attached to this, other than for information, there seems to be some potential disagreement on whether or not the proposed usage meets the commercial or industrial designation. I'm wondering if staff could clarify that for me. The other question emerged from the last speaker was whether or not this was a business that would be operated on a reduced schedule or platform or otherwise to meet the test of an H B B. Another question that was presented was, who will, other than a complaint-driven or complaint-based situation, who does monitor? And is that left up to the expectation of residents or otherwise? The question that I had, and I probably should have asked one of the delegations, is whether or not there's a neighborhood association? Because we all speak about how critical neighborhood associations are to the fabric of our community independently and at large. And it seems as though that there isn't a mechanism, as we're witnessing by the fact of where we are today, there is not a mechanism that residents in the form and character of their areas... And to me, it's not a one-size-fits-all. This isn't a one glove that fits every situation. But if our... If the mechanism isn't in place, who would a neighborhood association say, "Hey, this is what's happening"? There's no signs going up, obviously. This is unique in so much as it is in these, and there is three homes using the same entrance and exit, not a single driveway. So I think that, to my point about one-size-fits-all, and I think that the H B B might just be a one-size-fits-all, and so, not unlike our previous conversation about financial plan, it's okay if things aren't... We have to... That's why we have amendments to Bylaw 4500, and we've seen, I think, over a thousand of them since it was implemented. Because you don't catch everything all the time until something happens, until a circumstance or an issue or happens like this one, and you kind of go, "Oh, gosh." But our bylaw says it's okay, so it's okay, but... So I know I spoke a lot, I know I've said, made some statements, but I've also asked some questions, and if there's an opportunity to have those questions answered, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Beswick.
Thank you, Your Worship, through your Councilor Beswick. I'll... You have a few questions, so I'll give my best answer, and please jump in if I miss anything. So first of all, the question about what is a commercial use versus an industrial use? The home-based business regulations, as they were written, basically set the terms and conditions. As long as a business meets those terms and conditions, a business license is granted. There's very few exceptions under the bylaw. There's been uses that have been identified at the time of all those draft, which would be completely inappropriate, and one of those that comes to mind is like Body Shop for Arnold Go. But with the exception of that very small group, any business that comes forward and meets the terms and conditions of this section of the bylaw would be granted to a home-based business. So the second question was about the scale, and what do we mean about limiting the scale? So the bylaw speaks to a number of things, excuse me, including size, talks about maximum size for an accessory building, forty-two square meters, so it would scale that way. It limits advertising, allows very limited signage. Heard speakers this evening talk about, or Saturday talked about, vehicle trips, so it limits the amount of vehicle trips that can come to and from that business. It also limits the number of employees, non-resident employees that can work there. So all of these things that you would not normally have apply to a commercial business that may be located on commercial, rezoned property elsewhere in the city. Enforcement question, as with all of our bylaws, we respond based on complaints. So if any business is operating in the city, or if there's a land use issue, that a neighboring resident or citizen believes that there's a conflict with bylaw, then they report that to our bylaw department, and there'd be an investigation, but it is based on a complaint. Neighborhood association, I have it in my head, if there's an active neighborhood association in that area, we do not notify neighboring residents or neighborhood associations regarding the business license applications. It's not... I wouldn't compare it to something like zoning. This is as of right use. If the use is allowed on the property and the conditions are met, it's delegated to the business license officer to issue that business license. These applications are vetted. If application comes in and staff have questions about how it could apply, we may ask for additional information on how would a business win to comply with these conditions, but generally if it's felt that the conditions are fed addressed, then that business license is issued. The final item that I had down in notes was the easement and access. This is a private easement, and I don't know if Councilor Beswick raised this question, but certainly raised earlier, about who enforces this. The city's not partying to this specific easement, so if there is an issue on that property in terms of someone's parking or not in compliance with that easement, it's a civil matter between the property owners.
Does anyone have a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Bill. The home-based business bylaw was last updated when?
It hasn't had a comprehensive review, I would say, since the time that it was first drafted.
Yet.
Nineteen, was it nineteen ninety-three, I believe?
Would it be reasonable simply just to suggest that it be part of a work plan forward? And that's just a solid comment, but to avoid or to learn from our concerns and issues that are raised over time. And just a question, so that's a comment, I think we should, that's twenty-five, twenty-three A home-based business application, if I wanted to have a dog grooming at my place, and, you know, that sounds like a good idea, but I have a pen in the backyard when the mom girls are barking like crazy for hours. But without visiting the site necessarily, so when we have home-based business applications before us, is it typical for us not to visit the site?
We would not, staff would not normally attend the site where there's not a building permit involved. In this specific case, we're talking about a building permit, staff would attend both prior additions of the building permit and following through the inspection process. But if it was just business facilities inside a house, like accessory building, we would not normally attend that. We may ask questions of the applicant regarding on, for example, grooming, how they intend to comply, or will be accommodated completely, for example, the security service. We would ask for those details.
Thank you. So in this case, you indicated if there was a building permit application, then that would trigger a visit. Was there a visit for the building permit application because we understood that there was going to be a home-based business application to follow?
Sorry, I wish I should clarify, the reason we would attend in that case is the building inspector would attend for the purposes, whenever we get a building permit application, we attend the site for a site review, and then we would attend the site during that process to ensure compliance with the building code requirements. Building official not there to review his home-based business license regulations or compliance with the assistance regulations.
Assuming that there's a reason for the building permit, which is to... If I apply for a building permit, I typically would have to tell why I'm applying for a building permit, which would, to me, trigger a conversation between a department to a department? As, yes, I'm going to put in a dog, whatever. I'm putting a shooting range in here for whatever. So would that not trigger a conversation interdepartmental?
It may. Depends on the nature of the application. In this specific case, my understanding is that the property owners approached the city and were able to have a discussion of both planning and building at the same time, so there was that discussion and full understanding of what was going on. However, I could apply for a building permit to put an accessory building in my backyard, simply as a garage, apply for it, have it built, and come in next month and apply for a business license. Would, in my case, if no discussion between the two parties?
And in order to avoid such circumstances as this, I would like to think that we might be able to if we had more information on what it is that the intent of the accessory building is going to use for storage, I'm just going to store motor stuff, you know, setbacks and all that stuff, cool. But I would have to think that there is a conversation that happens, because if you're going to apply for a building permit, you have to know what materials need to be used for its use. Separations, fire separations, whatever, noise abatements, whatever. So I suspect that there would have to be more information at the application stage that would lead one to think, "Okay, I better give you a heads up." I'm not saying that we shouldn't do these things, or permit these things to happen, but, "Hey, listen, I have to give you a heads up. It's my duty to inform you that if you're going to put this here and it's a home-based business, that's the reason, then you need to put three-quarter inch and not half inch, you need to put this venting and not that venting, you need to do this and not that, or you're not going to comply when you come back and ask for that home-based business permit." So let me save you some time and money right now. So it... I can see the concerns from all parties, and I think that they're all valid and they're all real, and so I think we need to revisit our policy so that we don't have this conversation or we limit these types of conversations in the future. That's... Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hong.
Thank you. I understand Councilor Beswick's concern, and something I wanted to bring up was, I actually would like for us to read, address home-based businesses. Purely on the basis of it being a business, you know, we charge secondary suites water and sewer. Now, when you have a hairdressing salon in a house, do they pay extra water and sewer? Can anybody answer that question?
If you're a financier, you could want to jump in, but generally sewer is a flat user. Water, for example, wouldn't pay on usage, so if you had an operations using your water, you'd reflect on that.
Yeah, oh, I guess garbage, right? Garbage, sewer. So my point is, if we're charging secondary suites for extra usages, why aren't we doing that with some home businesses? I'm not saying all, like a person doing taxes, I can't see us charging extra sewer and double garbage can of pickup, but when you're having somebody like a bakery, a hair salon, those that are going to generate extra burden on our systems, why shouldn't they pay? We do that with secondary suites. Not only the... And I believe in home businesses, and I think they're great for exactly what the last speaker talked about, she wants to be with her family, they don't want to be away, they want to be close to home, that they can do this on an as-me basis. But again, it takes away from commercial space, the people that are paying taxes, they should get this. So for us, you know, having a look at where we can... I hate to tax people for user rates, but they all should be paying their fair share to be equal to the others. Having a secondary suite, we're charging extra. So why are we doing this with businesses that we find that are redeeming using extra resources, let's say, in infrastructure?
Councilor Jokel.
Thank you. Two questions for staff. Is... Mr. Wallace mentioned H B B and the commercial. What is the difference for my owns? Is there a big difference? Home-based, H B B, and commercial?
A difference in terms of the scale of the operation?
Yeah.
So again, it really gets back to the home-based business regulations do not specifically generally define uses. They say if you meet these criteria, theoretically, you could have a commercial business. So the example would be a catering business that may establish based on a scale, has a number of employees and the size of these be a commercial center. We also have catering businesses that are home-based businesses, they comply with the criteria, they're small in area, they're small in terms of the number of employees, and they don't need that same requirement. As long as they meet those criteria under the home-based business regulations, they're going to be issued a home-based business license. The same would apply for a lawyer's office or accountant's office. If you're a large firm and you have multiple employees, maybe you're a commercial business. If you're a single proprietor, then you could have your home-based business in your home, as long as you didn't have more than the five vehicle trips a day, you could issue a home-based business license. So many, just as I said, many of those commercial uses are allowed in both places, it's back to the scale and compliance with the regulations.
Something else, please. So the ten allowed in this case, the lady that owns the bakery, she's allowed to... Like, she's only allowed to go in and out ten times?
Or is that only business-related?
That would be business.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I don't want to get in the police and kid soccer and those type of things. I get that. So anyway, so my question would be then, or our final comment would be is, obviously this is public, this is in our public media here, and our... So obviously, we legally can't make a decision. What I would hope to do is staff could hear the concerns of the two speakers, Ms. Chan and Mr. Wallace, and the owner that spoke, and try to work those things out if they can. We definitely know we've got to have a conversation on all these type of bylaws and see what fits in. The key that stood out to me was that the residents, that the residents, I forget the line of the government used, the business has to suit the neighborhood, basically, in other words.
Complement.
Complement the neighborhood. So that seems pretty broad there, but I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Keppe.
No.
Councilor Brennan.
It seems to me that we have discussed this a lot, and we might be ready for a motion, so I'll try one and see.
There is a motion on the floor.
There's a motion to receive.
Oh, to receive. So can I call the question on motion to receive? And I'll make a motion that we ask staff to bring this back down, to review the bylaw and bring back the report in the fall.
Can I just do one sort of point of clarification, perhaps staff can speak to it, but one of the things that is in this report and some of the legal advice that you received separately, which I won't repeat in open, is that part of having a fair and transparent process is not changing the rules midway through it. So if there's deficiencies in this, then staff need to take a look at the bylaw as a whole and the processes as a whole, and how it interrelates with separate processes, which are the building permitting and enforcement of other types of bylaws on the books. There's all separate, different processes, so it will take some looking, too. But when we have something there, we don't have the discretion to interpret and set aside... to interpret and set aside what's in there. Staff apply the rules that have been adopted. So if we're not satisfied with those rules, then that means we need to look, go back, take a look at it, and change the tool that we have.
Counsel Brennan.
And that's precisely what I want to suggest. I want to suggest that we receive the report we have, we understand what it means, proceed with the case of hand that we would in, in any case. But separate from that, that we ask staff to review the, the bylaw and bring back a report with recommendations if necessary for council in the fall, because I think it needs some time. But we've got, we've got a lot of information here, but it needs to be collated together in a, in a report form for us. So.
So with respect to calling the question, I do have questions that are raised within the plat.
Staff.
Okay, if you, it's all right?
Yeah, so just remember that I got this.
Okay. So this has certainly opened up a can of worms. I do have, I do have some questions to, to staff, and that is, I was very surprised when I saw that we have forty-one percent of the business licenses in the NAMO are home-based. And I think about, about the other thing where it says, no retail sales from the home-based location, wholesale or off-site, off-site sales only, brings, brings the question. Hair salons, I go in and get a haircut, I give them money. What's a retail transaction? Am I correct?
It's a commercial transaction. It's not retail sales from the description of our bylaw.
Services.
So, so any services? Is that what you're saying?
Any services, so similar massage therapist leadership, I would say would be similar. It's not a retail.
But if I, if they have, if they have as part of their, part of their auctions shampoo?
They should not have any sort of concept under home businesses.
And so it's services only. Okay. That's great. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I agree with you on that one, and that might be an area where we would need to look at it, because I think, I certainly know home-based businesses, and I could talk to many, many of them, of course, but that do sell on their homes. So, and they do have business licenses. So I, I just think that, I think Diane, or Counsel Brennan is right, we probably do need to look at this. But in this particular instance, we, we definitely have heard both sides, and, and we do know that this application meets the requirements of our bylaw. And, and so we don't have any control over whether or not we decide whether this should move forward. It is a fait accompli. And if we're going to question these in the future, then definitely we need to be looking and making sure that all of our questions are answered within the bylaw so that we can, so we can feel comfortable moving forward, that home-based business bylaw fits the criteria that we want it to fit. So.
So the question's been called. Any, any other counselors? Any questions with respect to this report?
Do you want to receive it?
Yes. Counsel Thor.
I'd like to make a comment to the chair. Thank you. I think Counselor Pratt has summed things up pretty well. I, I agree that a subsequent motion to examine and revisit this whole bylaw would be in order. I don't think one size does fit all. And I'm, I'm wondering in terms of possibly a type of panel, like a design review panel, to, to vet applications. But that, that's a discussion for future. In this case, as Counselor Pratt has said, it seems to me that we have an existing bylaw which is being met, and, and that's, that's the fact. I will say, in addition, I do understand the concerns of the delegations, the second two delegations, but I also was really pleased to hear what Ms. Jones had to say. And in my mind, that alleviates some of the concerns that I was, was having earlier. So I think we, we need to move on on this.
So with Counsel's, that was your question, to receive the report. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. And are you proposing a subsequent motion?
Yeah. I would move that staff review the home-based business bylaw and bring back the report with recommendations if necessary to council for the fall of 2016.
Second, by Counsel Bestwick.
I would ask respectfully, do you not impose a timeframe on us, given all the priorities we're balancing right now? And I don't think if necessary recommendations, we're going to bring the report back to you with recommendations. And when we think about this, this might be something that finds its way into public engagement, so I don't want to circumscribe the process and the timeframe needed to do this properly. I know that there were some amendments to it in 2011, so we're happy to take that away and do that work for you. But we just respectfully request that it doesn't have time and scope to be able to do it properly. So in that case, it would be staff review the HBB bylaw and bring back the report.
And it's been seconded, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you. So any discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
Are, are we making notes?
Yeah, I think so.
Seeing none, all questions in favor, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Again, thank you to everyone who made a presentation as a delegation. Community Services, Municipal Natural Capital Pilots Project Pilot Study for the City of NAMO in purposes to obtain council support for the City of Anima to participate in the Municipal Capital Initiative, otherwise known as an MNCI pilot study. We have one delegation, Mr. Wally Wells.
Thank you, Your Worship and Members of Council and Staff. My name is Wally Wells. My residence is Unit 2303, 1545, NADR. I really wear two hats being here today. One is a citizen of Anima, which is to celebrate my death here. One of the two best decisions I ever made, the other one is the lady I married. And really take every opportunity within my expertise to progress our city. My expertise, as you know, is in the asset management field. Wearing my hat as the Executive Director of Asset Management BC now, the title's matter, and up our time staff. So I do anything to take out the garbage joints on the telephone, it doesn't matter, the fact that things get done. Just for, may bore those that were at the convention yesterday, because a couple of the statements I'll make exist to let the rest know who Asset Management BC is. We borrowed a term from the health industry called community of practice, and that's really all we are. Our Asset Management BC is not a company, it is not organized, we do not get paid by any client base from what we do. The primary focus of our activities is information and knowledge transfer. We have been copied to some degree in every province of Canada now because of the success that we have seen. And certainly even Infrastructure Canada are looking at the type of regional network that has been developed to progress our First Nations and communities in BC as an example for them in delivery of services and asset management. We've had a number of opportunities of pilot projects coming along, and I've been very lucky to be able to bring those as early as possible to city staff. The city staff have done a great job in pursuing a number of those pilot-type projects, and I think I can proudly say thanks to staff after and good work up front. So far, I think we're batting three out of three a hundred percent successful in the pilot projects and training opportunities we've had that have not been available province-wide necessarily. This is another one. This came about through great work done by the Town of Gibson's on equal strategy, and they have on their website their equal strategy document. What we found in under successful cities, as you know, we took the environment pillar and divided it in two so that we differentiate between the natural environment and the built environment. There is a relationship between them, obviously. And what Gibson's really initiated was work on the natural environment and how we can and do use some of those resources to better the community, not just within the context of the natural environment itself, but use as, as an asset of the community. The opportunity came about as a result of that to look for funding. Some of the funding has now been secured. In order to be ready to go ahead with that, the project manager for it out of, been out of Victoria called for letters of interest. You have that in your package. The letter would due the fourteenth of March. We discussed what possible project might be representative of denial that would further not only denial, but further the knowledge base in there, and we really came up with the Buttercup Marsh. Buttercup Marsh, a lot of people look at, and I know there was some criticism a number of years ago when the city bought the other half of the marsh, we didn't need more parkland. What people don't really understand is it's way more than parkland. It naturally holds water, which then acts as a reservoir for stormwater management. When you expose water to air like that, you significantly can improve water quality, other than putting it in a pipe and running it into the ocean. And not only do we benefit by the partnership that we have for the, the marshes, and I know BIU do their bird count, bird tracking and bird count up there, and great place for walking and so forth. It's also a critical resource for the city in, in stormwater management and some of the controls that are exercised in there. Not too many people understood that, and I'm not sure we fully understand it yet, and that's part of the, the pilot project really is to do that. The accountants and the, the finance people are, are considering looking at how you build that in as we have the other built assets into some valuation. I'm, I'm going to leave that one for the finance and the accountants and the economists to look at. From the technical side, we've really looked at it as risk and consequences. The risk of us not having those marshes to deal with stormwater quantity and quality is a consequence of having to build something else to manage that stormwater. So the little bit of money expended now with the partnership in maintaining those properties and owning the properties is probably one to two percent of the millions of dollars we might have had to spend on alternatives for stormwater management, and probably not have done it as well, as nature does it itself. So what the pilot projects are going to look at now, there will be probably five or six in the province. I think I can probably safely say there's a good ninety percent chance that Anima will be selected. We will be looking at with the other resources available within the project, some of the criteria, how the swamp, there are the marshes interreact in our system, how do we develop the criteria from what for little we do know about that to evaluate other natural resources, streams and creeks and so forth here. That information also then will be a basis for evaluation for use by other municipalities. So for the very little bit of money that the city is being asked to put in a little, a little later on in the staff report that your environmental planner had written, I can't tell you exact, what the exact dollar value will be, but you're going to get quite a big multiplier of work done for the dollar value that's put in here. Again, in my opinion, keeping Anima at the leading edge, where I certainly like to see the city be, and in my view is now, and the forefront of asset management. I had a call the other day to the National Canadian Publication on the work done in Gibson's, asking if, for the first time, if they could publish this information and this project in their national publication, Renew Magazine. It will be published in June. This is leading edge in the country. And in supporting this for you today, I would hope you keep Anima at the leading edge, and that you proceed both with the committee today and the council next week, and say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go away, any questions for the delegation? Counselor Bestwick?
Thank you. Comments and compliments, I just, it's, we mean that.
Yep, I just need to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think this, this initiative is likely long overdue. When I hear of members of our community and beyond criticize this council for its art acquisitions, for its property acquisitions, you alluded to one, which was the marsh we purchased to stop legal park road as well. And when we start talking about land en masse and acquisitions, I become extremely frustrated when I hear development and density. And when I hear people complain that we are acquiring properties for more reasons than just quote-unquote parks, it's about the ecosystem and the environment, and it is about protecting our natural resources, and it's about greenhouse gas emissions and clearcutting. And we all grew up, well, not all of us, many of us grew up when clearcutting was the norm, and it's not anymore, and it shouldn't be. And thank God for those people that wrapped things around trees and chained themselves to them when they did. When I hear of an initiative like this, where by we fill in swamps for density, we've done a great job with our environmentals about preparing setbacks, increasing the preparing setbacks, with paying attention to it. There was no attention paid to it, because we didn't care anymore, because we got lots of land, apparently. And so when we can protect the land, and when we can protect our environment, and we can protect the quality of life, I get a little annoyed when I hear we're filling in more swamps to put more houses on them. So I hope that this project will bring more knowledge to why we have the rules that we have in place and the, and the benefits and to that decision you made, that second basis, and you're like, move to Anima.
Thank you. Counsel Kip?
Thank you very much. The work you do on our infrastructure and this type of stuff is hugely important. Years ago, Professor Dr. Bill Reese, who's called Dr. Doom over in BC, and he talked about this economy, we have a production driving consumption, and we never value the raw material going in nor the waste going out. Currently, we value the waste going out far more than the raw materials going in. And I think this type of initiative will hopefully drive our decisions more and help drive decision-making. And SRI, socially responsible investment, is hugely based on this type of thing. And a couple of the institutes, the Natural Capital Institute out of the States, the Marion Institute, they've done a lot of work on this for a long time. So from my perspective, it's, it's worth our investing in and pushing as quick as possible a motion from council supporting it and moving the funding or whatever we need to do with the report forward so that we can get involved. Because I think it'll help us in the future on all our decisions there, especially ones that as we've grown, as we've expanded, we have done a good job. Back in the nineties, late nineties, we started getting rid of pipes. Engineers were designing big pipes. What's the creek at the end of Sunset Drive along there? The creek, and we had to build a huge, big concrete, because we piped the water right down there. Now we're opening up swales and doing that. It recharges our water systems. It's just hugely important. And I appreciate the work of you all, and I support this under.
Counsel Pratt?
Thank you. Wally, thank you so much for coming today. I'm pretty excited about this project. I think it's a really wonderful thing to do. I think it will benefit our community. I think it will benefit other communities as well. So, and I love the idea that we're kind of at the forefront of that, and that's a nice thing to think about. To me, it's, we're doing some of this. I mean, it's certainly Buttercup's is, is a good example of something that we've done that was very positive, and a lot of people don't know about it. And I wish more people did know about that kind of thing. Why do we do that? Why are we saving a marsh? Why, you know, that kind of thing. I, I think it's important for our community to be educated on that, and maybe that's a media issue rather than that. But it is hard to get those, those kinds of stories out to the community as to why we're doing them. I think about the Littley Valley subdivisions that are going in there and having walked through those, very beautiful, think, oh, wow, isn't this nice? These people are really lucky they get to have these little ponds and things. And, and there's a reason for that. And I remember one of the developers saying And I remember one of the developers saying to me one day, you know, in the old days, we used to just cut the trees, cover everything over, build the houses, and storm drains went out to wherever. Now they're not doing that. Now they're allowing natural water waste to do the work for us in a lot of cases. And I think it's really important that we look to that. Counselor Bestwick was talking about repairing setbacks, that kind of thing. Absolutely, all of that is so important, and we're just too bad, we're just starting to really realize how important that is, and that we haven't realized it all along. But now we do, and better now than not at all. So I'm really, really pleased about this. I'm definitely in favor of it, and I think it's a very small investment for our project that's really worthwhile. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Counselor Ford.
I'm glad I made it back through your presentation. It's wasted an hour and a half at a doctor's office. And I really appreciate that, Wally. It's kind of ironic, because while I was waiting, I got a phone call from some Victoria company that wants to do a survey on sustainability of the green and environments, et cetera, et cetera. This is exactly what they were talking about. I said to them at first, you know, I'm not really the person you'd want to be talking to about this, because I don't know a heck of a lot about it. But then, when I say, we've got Buttercup, we've done Littley Valley, we've got Coleridge, and we've got a number of beautiful spaces in this, and we're way ahead of the game. And I think we can be even further ahead of the game by continuing to do that. You know, the counselor Bestwick mentioned density. It's not all we can look at. We can look at density, but we've also got to look at green in the community and the sustainability of the canyon as a whole. Without those green spaces, Buttercups, the water, the environment, you just have a concrete jungle, and it would not be a pleasant place to live in. This was the best decision I made. Thanks.
Counselor Pratt.
Yeah, I just want to remark that I think we have sold ourselves a little bit short. I think we have been, we have had a green agenda for some time now, and we've done some really good work, and I think we need to pat ourselves and our staff on that for the work we've been doing, at least in the last ten or fifteen years. We've done some good work, and we've made lots of priorities that have made us a city that is award-winning and stands out among others, for sure. I just got back from Seoul, Korea, and that city was decimated during the war, and so when they came back to build, it's all steel and glass, but, and it's very, very dense. But without that kind of density, it wouldn't be able to have these massive green spaces that they have in their cities and the outlying areas, farming and all sorts of things. People do it differently, but there's combinations, I think, that we have to be aware of when we're planning our cities, and density plays its part, so long as you can counterbalance it with the other values of the green, and then just in terms of the financial outlay to use things like Buttercups, Marshes, etc. So I just wanted to pat ourselves a little bit and say, you know, we actually have come a long, long way, and we're doing really good work.
Counselor Pratt.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one other thing that I forgot to say, and I've written it in my notes, so I do want to make it, I do want to emphasize it. When I worked in the nonprofit industry, we used something called social accounting, and that was to measure the unmeasured, what is invisible, the volunteer hours that are contributed to your community, those types of things, and actually put them right in your budget. So if you had to pay for them, what would it cost? And use it as revenue and expenses, and that's what we're talking about here, too. This is an asset, and it's something that we don't really think about, but it is something that, and I see that this is part of that study, and I'm really excited about that when I read about it, that the intent of the pilot study will be to pioneer strategies to conserve and enhance natural capital by measuring and managing natural capital within existing asset and financial management business processes. And that's really what this project is about, so that we do value it, even though it's invisible, that that marsh manages our stormwater. That's an asset that we, is kind of invisible. So that's an exciting piece of this, honey. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Wishy. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Speaker.
Motion received, delegation. Counselor Bestwick, Counselor Pratt. All is in favor? Opposed, motion carries. So there's a staff recommendation on page fifteen. Moved and seconded?
Wanted to.
Okay. Discussion. Sign in, call question. All is in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next item. Collet Park Water Supply Main Pipe Supply Tender. And the purpose is to advise council of under standard call of $250,000 and above, and according to the council's purchase and value.
Wishing, sorry, just reading a question here. Number two, I don't know if we wanted to decide not to endorse. I think the conversation was about endorsing the whole.
That was one of the options, but the staff recommendation is actually to endorse and approve.
Oh, I'm an option. Here we go. Sorry. Wrong one, excuse me. Thank you, sorry.
While we're waiting, there's no presentation on this one. There's a staff report.
There's no recommendation. Just information only.
So to receive the report for information.
So we don't even need to do that?
Counselor Brennan? Very good. Counselor Bestwick.
Well, again, while there isn't a recommendation, but we have to approve the information that's being provided to us, is telling us why we have to buy the stuff now and not later. So while, I realize there's no recommendation, but there's got to be a recommendation that we receive and direct staff to proceed or whatever.
Worship, council can receive it. It's easier to accept that there's an action, council's willing to be receiving it. It's not a necessary step by the fact that it's on the agenda, council has by default received it. It's information that you receive, but it's your pleasure if you do want to create a motion to not have to receive it.
I almost feel that I shouldn't even have it. I know it's over 250, so that's why we have it. You bring it to council because it's over $250,000?
You can say no.
So if that's the only reason why you bring it, then we have to receive that.
I'm going to look at the drafting of this report and see what the standard practice was. May have gotten switched up, but.
Well, part of it is because of the policy. And I think Speaker has a.
So it's a policy-driven report, so everything that we go out to tender that's above $250,000, we inform council that we are going out to do it. And as a couple of officers say, it's the council's discretion whether to say yes or no at that point. But if you accept the recommendation that we're advising you, we assume we're going forward, which could easily say.
Therefore, you needed a recommendation from staff, and then you guys go on. So we'll just update this weekend. Next time, you'll see a different report, so we'll have the recommendation for you.
Because we do have an option, we could say not to receive it. Then we have to come back with an option. But I'm not suggesting we do that, but it's just.
I don't want implied authorization. I prefer to have express.
So if I'm clear on this, I just wanted to make sure. Counselor Kip and Counselor Hall, Wishes to speak, I just want to make sure I'm clear. There's a requirement that any time we spend over $250,000, it must be by a recommendation or endorsement of council. Correct, Mr. Reynolds?
That's correct. So to the point that we say we'll make, we should actually kind of have a two-step kind of thing. Now, it's information, but at the same time, we must recommend, so that you can give us direction whether to proceed or not to proceed. But now, there is context to having this process, we're in the midst of changing and not bringing this forward, because you actually saw this at the budget time, but for today, I think you just need the second piece, which is recommend staff post proceed.
So just to clarify, originally, we were told there was a project of X value, right? Million dollars, let's hear it, two million dollars. Of that, there's a component that is the purchase of the pipe. What we're doing here is we're saying, look, because we haven't gone out to tender yet, or we're in the process of going out to tender, this project's going ahead, you've already approved it, we're just saying we need lead time to buy the pipe, and so we're asking you, we're advising you that we're going to buy the pipe.
That's correct, but however, that's not the intention of this process. We're reading into what's going on in this particular project, but your lead is correct.
We've already approved the project.
Yes.
What you're doing now is complying with procurement policy. Somebody has to sign off somewhere for the money we're spending, and this is a big ticket item, therefore, it's in front of you.
So Counselor Hall, did you have some questions, or you just want to just go to a recommendation?
I actually have some questions. Again, I'm going to bring up a point, the value of it is listed on here, which I, and the process, I get that we should have information that we're going to approve a project over $250,000, but I don't like having the actual value, so it's bids, bid on that exact amount. I keep bringing that point up where it's disclosed.
The $900,000 range.
Yeah, $900,000. It's disclosed, and we're willing to be, so when it goes up for tender, it kind of works up to the $900,000 range. So I'm just hoping if, I don't know if it's in practice, that we can have that part deleted where it's over $250,000, and then when we come to approve it, that, I know that this is not transparent, but we do it in camera with an amount that we know, that follows our rules, until it goes out to tender, and then we can release it in camera. I just don't like telling people what we're willing to pay, and it always comes in that range. It kind of, it always bothers me how, I know we're trying to be transparent, but just kind of showing all our A's in the basket. Just, I don't know how we can work with that, where we receive this report for information, but not have the amount, and then when we go in camera to approve, it would be done in camera for us to approve it with the actual amount that we know, that we can agree on, that's on record, and then after the tender's gone out and come back, we release the in-camera information. That seems to make the most logical sense to me, of showing all our A's in the basket.
We actually don't need the in-camera staff. You approve a project with a total budget, that's fine. We're telling you a certain threshold is done, we're going to go do it through this process, rather than direct, or this, or that. So we're just informing you that we can delete this dollar figure. You raised it a couple times, and we just haven't got there yet. Okay.
So Counselor Kip, this next.
What is a novation contract?
What is a novation contract?
It's right here, the line, the page, bottom third page of it. Just after the second vote, once the project tender is awarded, so, a novation contract will be entered into.
Your worship, three, Counselor Kip, your question, novation contract assigns, for instance, will, will, will order tender to a pipe supplier, and then when we have a general contractor onboard, that contract that we've established with the pipe supplier, then they call it novates over to the general contractor. The general contractor takes responsibility for the.
You work for me.
Yeah.
Engineer, you're up with it. Thank you. Your worship, a follow-up on that. At AVICC this weekend, we passed a motion that talked about the dependency on professional reports, and there's been some concerns recently through a number of organizations about the government, of course, with Shangri-La, having their own experts and coming in and doing that. So I think our contract world is changing dynamically over the next while, and we have to look at this. And I totally agree with Counselor Vaughn, and all of a sudden, even the overall budget can be put as an estimate, but I think even our staff has said that when you review these where you don't put the price in, pricing's dropped by quite a bit, upwards of twenty percent sometimes. So I think we really have to move towards, I hate to say, but hiding what we think is our cost value until we actually get costs done by the professionals in the business for bidding on our projects. But we can get estimates of the overall budget, so a report that comes home.
Counselor Pratt.
I have to admit, I'm confused about this whole, because this question has come up quite a few times, and Counselor Hall has made that point. And I understand what you're saying, Counselor Hall, and I agree with you, that when you go out and say, oh, and they know it's 250 or 500,000 or whatever, it's going to come in around that range. I'm wondering what the standard practice is and how we avoid that, if we can avoid it at all. If we can, that's, I mean, you have to have a number when you bring a project to council for us to approve it. I mean, if you say, okay, we're going to go and do this project, but we're not going to tell you what it is, because we don't want everybody to know right now, so we're just going to leave the price up in the air, that doesn't make any sense either.
So what council does for every project is it has a budget, and there's a whole bunch of different things you buy to do that project, supplies, labor, whatever you're doing. So you guys approve the overall budget for that project, and staff is managing that within that budget, and it wants to come in under what they're doing. So there's nothing, it's not actually hiding the purchase price, it's that we know we're going to have to buy so many units that will likely go over $250,000. Therefore, we're going to let you know that we're going to go for tender. We don't actually have to put a price of what that is in going out, because it's part of staff's responsibility in managing the overall project. If we start, if we know we're going to go over on a project, we're going to have to come and get an amendment with you to change what that is, like say, the dollar impact, well, anyway, the cost of the decision.
So just as a follow-up, then, we're not actually putting a price on something when we're putting it out there.
But we are, because we're putting it in our reports.
Pardon?
We are, because we're putting it in our reports. It's our estimate of the total amount that we need to get. We think it'll be in this price range. We don't have to put that in our report.
Okay, all right. That's what I'm asking. How do we avoid that? And, okay, that makes sense.
Counselor Ford.
I might be able to clarify it for you really easy if you look at the summary points, where it says total value, the total value of the phase, this phase of the project is $5,015,000. First point talks about it's estimated that the supply main pipe supply tender will be in range of 900,000. So what you say is, the estimated for this phase of the project is 5.515 million, we will be tendering for the pipe supply without giving them an hundred, and then they come back with.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Before we move on, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds.
That's okay. Just to save counsel, I think we intend to do away with this process, importantly. And so we'll just go through this. It's been raised quite a number of times, we've just.
Sorry.
Yeah, brought into it. So we'll do away with this process, and then we'll have a different process in terms of how you approve the capital budget itself. We'll have the list of projects on the total, and that's what's available to the public. You would have the individual pieces to look into. So let's just go through this one. Hopefully, in the next month, we can.
So I am a little concerned about doing this, doing this process where we have no budgets for projects. That concerns me. However, I understand what, you know, council's fears are, that, you know, if we say we're going to spend $25 million on a project, you know, it'll be a small water treatment plan or whatever the case might be, $25 million, then generally, we're all going to commit in $25 million. But we can give examples, and we have to be careful, where, you know, a couple of years ago, three years ago maybe now, staff need to go out to get pricing, to get budget pricing. now, staff need to go out to get pricing, to get budget pricing, to know what to provide us in the way of budgets. So for example, I mean, I've seen situations where I went out to buy one time four diesel engines with gearboxes, and the budget pricing came in at seventy-five thousand dollars each, and by the time we went to tender, they were down to, one supplier was down to sixty-one thousand. We've seen that on, 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 on Grafful as well, being given a budget price of twenty-five dollars for ten thousand tons or eleven thousand tons, then, then the amount was reduced, it was twenty-five dollars, the amount was reduced, and by the time we awarded the contract, it was actually twenty dollars and fifty cents. So it works both ways. I don't wanna restrict ourselves. We can, yes?
Your worship, if council's willing to give a motion, I have one in the agenda you can consider.
Yes.
So not to receive, but the Council of Norse, they called for public tender in excess of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the water supply DCC project WS forty-one.
So moved. And, so moved by Counselor Hong, seconded by Counselor Brennan, who's just split-seconded it. And discussion on, seeing, seeing none, call a question, all is in favor, opposed, motion here, great. So the next item is correspondence under item nine. Motion to receive the correspondence?
No.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion on the correspondence, or business arising from? Counselor, Ken. Yeah, I have concern with the corridor foundation, that it's asking us to send another rep to the respective meetings for every six months to get an update. One of my concerns is that we don't get updates a month now, and it's incredibly hard to get, so I'm not, not in favor of what they're suggesting. My personal view, just like I say, they're trying to get us to go on another committee to explain, and then it says the corridor is incredible, I don't know what it's saying. Railway staff would be in attendance to hear first-hand concern, they just thought they wanted to provide information, so I just like to say, I'm not sort of, not forming another committee to watch over, and of course, we got a motion this weekend at AVICC to have a review of the Island Corridor Foundation, so I think this is a bit premature. Counselor Bestwick.
Thank you. The Island Corridor Foundation is, has an ask, and so are we going to respond to the ask to Counselor Ken's point? They're asking that we appoint a delegate to two meetings a year from this council, I suspect. Is that, do you know if that is, is that correct? Is that, and are they asking every... Are they asking all municipalities, that they're making a ready, assuming to do this thing? Ken?
Point of order, can I?
Counselor Hong.
Thank you, sorry, Bill. Are you in conflict, Mayor McKay? Should you be asking this? I, I, I don't know, just asking.
I, I have, I have not sought advice as to whether I'm in conflict at this table.
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure, because your name's on here. So that was my question, if we're, if we're gonna discuss this, and if you were, I didn't want to.
Well, you know, seeing as you bring it up, perhaps you might wanna dig over the chair during this discussion.
Okay.
As I, as I've not asked.
Yeah.
So, your worship, in general terms, you're stating you're in conflict, just declaring what you're, just in general terms, and then...
No, no, I'm not stating I'm in conflict, conflict. What I am stating is that, on a conservative nature, and by the fact it was brought up by Counselor Hong, and because I've not sought advice as to whether I'm in conflict, I'll step out of the room. Okay. Okay.
So you could say an abundance of caution, potential conflict, is that what you said before?
Reception of conflict.
Reception.
Probably gets a decision, opinion to come back.
You should get that, you do have money for that.
He can do that in a conflict, and that just for about two thousand dollars.
Sorry, Counselor Bestwick, back to you, to your point.
Well, whether, I, I would have to assume if, if there's anything on, and I didn't intend to speak to conflict of interest, but since it's been brought up, I would have to assume that if you are a representative, and you are asking municipalities to participate by signature...
Victor, excuse me, would you mind closing that door?
Then you would clearly know whether or not you may or may not be, or should know, because at the regional district table, anytime the ICF comes up, where we all sit, or the majority of us sit, you can't be present. Just, you just can't, you're just not present when questions are being asked. So, to Counselor Hong, thank you, that makes sense, so no apologies for the point of order, but that said, we're being asked to respond to the Island Corridor Foundation, on whether or not we'd like to appoint somebody to attend two meetings. I personally am not in, in favor of sending a representative from this table to attend two more meetings, to listen or to the Island Corridor Foundation propaganda. So, we have a board rep, that I assume will bring information back somehow to our board, somehow, that we will be able to review. So if, if we need a motion, do we need a motion for this thing? Or if we do nothing, that means that we're not participating?
But, your worship, just a comment, so right now, so who we motion to receive? So any motion or action you wanna take subsequent would be after we receive, because really, there's no, if you choose to be opposed to receiving, it needs an action. So that's the question for council. I understand it is toward the RDM as well, and I don't know whether that's gonna influence council, if you wanna defer this to an upcoming meeting instead of making decisions.
Counselor?
Then I'm just simply so moved that we received the correspondence.
I'm gonna actually, this is a letter from the, from Bill McKay to Mayor McKay, asking the city to do something. This is not asking RDM to do something, so I think you guys need to deliberate on the request from Bill McKay to Mayor McKay, on what it is you wanna do.
Okay, Gord?
Did we receive this?
Well, so it says, read ICF local government liaison committee, is there even such a thing? It says, local government liaison.
They're trying to put one together.
Okay, so there isn't one. So why would we appoint someone to a committee that doesn't exist?
They're trying to pull...
So I know, they're trying to form it.
Their intention is to pull...
I get that, but it doesn't exist, but it's asking us to nominate someone to be on a committee that does not exist. And if we're not moving any business for the letter, if you don't, you know, if we move receipt of the letter, and that's all we do, then at some point, I would hope that they would be coming to the municipality, because...
I just said, that's a...
Well, yeah, but it's talking about a committee that doesn't exist.
Who says it doesn't exist? You might need to put it on.
Well, that's the thing, we don't even know if it exists or not, so why would we appoint someone to a committee that might not even exist? Yes, they may be wanting to create a committee, but why doesn't it say that? Like, local government liaison committee, that's us, we're the local government. I would think that they may be doing something like this in Duncan, trying to do something like this in Lancaster, trying to do something like this in Corning, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, by receiving the letter, that's all we're gonna do. I'm all for it, but I'm not for appointing anybody to a committee that I don't know whether it exists or not. By doing that, we might just be justifying the service of that committee.
I got Diane, Bill, and Wendy.
I don't have any comments on receipt yet, see if they respond at me.
Okay.
Thanks, Chair. Is, um, this whole conversation, this island corridor thing's been lingering, I think what's going on here is somewhat, they're trying to create a committee, going after the RDM, told, said they're not financially gonna fund it anymore, so I got a couple comments. I'd actually have, I, if we're up to be, I like to make a motion or a letter saying that actually we don't support this, and we'd like to have the, turn that piece into, you know, green spacer, height walkers and cyclists, like what they're doing over in Vancouver, that would be this corridor. And the first, they say the First Nations own it, so, well, then let the First Nations do it, they wanna do their piece. And my final comment would be, which I wish I'd brought up in the budget with Mr. Victor, is RDM, a week or so ago, pulled the, or some, so we're not gonna fund that million dollars anymore, five hundred, about half of that, five hundred plus thousands from the city, so we should be going, saying we wanna get our five hundred grand back too, down the road, because that's the city, taxes of the city's nine dollars, so why should we be sitting in a holding tank for some pipe grid? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Wendy?
With all due respect to everybody that has had a comment so far, we're a little off-track. I think we need to vote on the motion to receive the correspondence, and then if someone wants to make a motion that, we bring back a report or whatever on it, I mean, or, or make another motion as far as their request is concerned, so let's...
Okay, let's call a question.
Let's call a question.
Just to clarify, if we don't receive the correspondence, then we can't do anything afterwards?
Yes.
Why?
And I can answer your question, goodbye.
Okay, all is in favor of receiving, to receive, yeah.
So I'm gonna venture out there and suggest that Island Corridor Foundation wouldn't authorize its co-chairs to send out a letter requesting representatives if they didn't have authority internally to strike such a committee. I'm, I'm, that's without knowing what their internal governance is, but I'm gonna assume they have motions authorized to do that. So then I would respectfully say that Mayor and Campbell, Mayor McKay's been asked to appoint somebody, it's been brought to council, so you guys have to decide are you gonna appoint somebody or not.
Okay, so let's get a motion on the floor, so that we can talk about that.
I would say, no, we do not appoint anyone to the ICF liaison, I can say, regardless of...
A motion from Counselor Bestwick, we get that, whether we not approve, appoint?
The council wants to support appointment of a council member to the ICF liaison committee.
Great. Okay, and here we go, seconded, so you welcome, or you're... And Counselor Brennan?
So I'm gonna speak to this, and I'm gonna say that we, we have, and I don't, on the RDM, so, but I, I read the papers, so I'm guessing, that the, the, there's a continuing argument that we don't get enough information, we don't know what's happening, we're not communicated with, this appears to me to be a sincere attempt to change that and provide a method of getting communication to us. So, I, I don't want to decline to appoint someone, I'd like to see us appoint someone, and then we can get someone from our council to report to us, and we may have greater trust with someone from our, our council, and we would, and those of us who might be suspicious, will be able to, to be there and evaluate the stories that are told and come back and tell us. I think that rather than declining an opportunity to get more information, that we should accept that opportunity, particularly when there have been continuous complaints that we don't get communicated to.
Thank you, so I have Wendy, Gord, Jim, Ian, and Bill.
I tend to agree with, with Counselor Brennan, we have complained all along that we're not getting enough information, this is an opportunity for us to go and see what's happening, it never hurts to hear what's happening, we, we have the ability then to question, we have the ability, if we're part of a liaison committee, where we get to ask some questions, I would assume. So whether it's that they're telling us stuff they want us to hear, or whether the, the information is accurate, it's not for us to judge, I don't think, at this point in time, I think we can make those decisions ourselves, once we're part of that process. We've made it very clear at the RDM where we stand, but this is separate from that, I think, and because our mayor happens to be the chair of the, of the board of ICF, he is in conflict and can't really tell us anything, or whatever, but this gives us an opportunity to have somebody who can talk to us about the information that they're releasing, and it would be nice to know what information they're releasing. So I agree with Counselor Brennan completely, I think we do need to have somebody. Yes?
Just one point of clarification, just because I'm not certain, without him getting his conflict of interest advice, I'm not sure saying that Mayor McKay is in a conflict of interest and is therefore prohibited from telling Mayor and council anything about the activities the Island Corridor Foundation is accurate. I think that there's nothing that prohibits him from sharing the information with council about the activities of that foundation, either at the, at the RDM, as the board representative, or as your colleague, giving you that information, voting on a decision about what Mayor and council are gonna do for Island Corridor Foundation is different. So I think making that assumption, so, and I would just put out there, have you asked for updates on the Island Corridor Foundation, and what is the reporting mechanism we have in place now?
Thank you.
Okay.
I think there has been a decision that kind of captures this situation, and it was the Salt Spring decision, and people have been very reluctant, and I don't know whether the RDM would share their legal opinions, but I think they have received them, and so all, all, all that, I guess we know is, is that Ted Greaves would always leave the chamber, and he, he wouldn't report, so that's kind of what we know at this point.
Okay, I got Gord.
Yeah, way too many assumptions being made, and I, I would contend we're not declining an opportunity for more communication, we're declining an opportunity for less communication, especially if we choose to nominate Bill McKay to sit on that liaison committee, because as the chair of the Island Corridor Foundation has not come back to us with anything, to say that he might not be doing it because of conflict of interest, I don't buy that, he voted on, on the permissive tax exemption for Island Corridor Foundation, and as the chair of the Island Corridor Foundation, he should not have been voting on that. I admitted my mistakes for voting on something I was the chair of, he refused to admit this, said he wasn't in conflict and voted on it. I'm gonna support Counselor Bestwick's motion, I don't see any point to this committee other than the Island Corridor Foundation trying to finagle something out of the individual communities, now that it's losing support of the regional districts.
Thank you. Jim?
At AVICC, a motion passed, I believe strongly, one, to continue to go after the federal government for the funding, that's seven and a half million, and secondly, there was a strong motion to review the Island Corridor Foundation and its management, and that was a very strong one. The Torgerson case on Salt Spring Island, to me, is a, is a classic example of that governance over democracy. The mayor is democratically appointed to our council, through governance, he is appointed to the RDM board, through governance at the RDM board, he is appointed to the Island Corridor. Through this Salt Spring Island, which was, Island's trust gave out some money, some people on the board were our nonprofit, and they voted at the board table to give the nonprofit money, and then they're charged in conflict, and the power of that decision put it to the governance model, where the, the joining of society was more important than their, their democratic election. So we've asked for more of the information... So we've asked for more than information from Island Corridor. The cost, revenue sharing, service levels, what's the plan? We're paying right now like it's a full-blown railway, so we're, in fact, um, we've asked for more than just information. And currently, we have an agreement with the RDM, that the RDM deals with our Island Corridor Foundation. But I, I'm concerned that they're going about trying to divide and conquer. It's an old strategy to me, that concerns me, when you start inviting other people into the game, you know, to give them information every six months or so, right? And, um, for me, it's a concern. So I think we have other motions on the table at the RDM and other places that we should be responsible to. And that this is, I, I, like I said originally, it's out of order in my mind, it doesn't line up in the, in the process or anything, uh, that I say. And there again, we're confused with our own mayor, um, to address the, the, um, point of, you know, the lies of the conflict. When Ted Greaves was there, we couldn't hear a thing from him. We couldn't, our appointee goes there, so I would like appointees to go there to represent the voice of the council or the RDM versus their own personal beliefs. So I, I support the motion on the floor.
Ian?
Thanks, um, thanks Chair. Um, yeah, I, I supported the, the motions at RDM and the ABICC and, uh, and I still do. Um, I'm not sure I see this as opposed to those motions. It seems to me they're, they're offering a chance to, as it says in their letter, hear concerns and provide information. Now, whether they'll follow through on that or not, we don't know. But they're, they're offering an opportunity and I'm not sure that, um, that we should automatically discard that opportunity, when we do often complain we don't get information from them. Uh, and I was gonna make the point, but Counselor Pratt already made it, that if we don't, if the mayor is not in a position where he can give us that information because of a conflict, then maybe we do need to have somebody else who can bring the information. But Ms. Sanders already answered that one.
He can disclose confidential information, but general information about what they're doing, based on one-on-one.
Right.
And, and he doesn't even believe he's in a conflict. Now he stepped out of an abundance of confidence. So I'm finding a disconnect in the logic about why it is the city of Nanaimo has not been really getting any information. And there's more than one way of solving that problem.
So I'm, I'm not saying I'm supporting ICF. I guess I just don't see the harm in having another avenue of getting information. It's not a position I would be interested in.
I have, Bill?
Thanks, Chair. The information, like getting any information would be great. We've had none. And I'm glad this is in public here, realize this is on many subjects, that we have no information coming our way. It's not just a few of us being the bad boys. But what I, the information that a liaison from this table could share is that same stuff that the mayor could share. If the mayor can't share it, this liaison will go share it. There'll be a, there'll be conflict of interest, so no matter if it's any of us sitting there, if they say you're in conflict, this can't be out to the public. It don't matter, it doesn't matter who the face is, you can't share it. So adding another body there to be redundant, we just respectfully, again, ask, can you start reporting on some of the stuff? If you like, when I used to just enableize our AFN rep, I could go to AFN, I had to report back to council, it was one of AFN. Uh, what's the difference? And I had to. It wasn't, uh-huh, or whatever. So, uh, I, I don't feel like empowering ICF. I don't see this, this is totally redundant. We should ask for information, if it's any of you guys, I have no interest. Then, then it would be, uh, if, if it's a point, if it's a, in camera, you can't release it. No matter if it's asked of the mayor, you can't release it. So this is, we have a person there, we have a body there, and this is saying what's going on. I like, so I definitely don't support adding another body there. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Wendy, for your point, I just wanted to throw in mine before I forget. We, as a city in Nanaimo, in the committee of the whole meeting, can accept any delegation to come present to us the information that they wanna perceive or let us know. There is nothing stopping the Island Corridor Foundation from right now from coming, making it as a delegation, and coming to ask us about the firsthand concerns being expressed by local government. We don't need a committee for them to come and ask us these questions. It, it's being redundant. You know, we're wasting our time, so we can focus on other things within our communities and do great things. They can come before us. I, I honestly, I don't really care. And I don't wanna hear what Victoria wants to do with their section of the railway. I don't care what Courtney wants to do with theirs. I, I kinda like to focus on Nanaimo. And it's a key point for me, where we're all made up from island, we're just gonna sit there and wobble. Cause everybody has a different view of what they want for, for the corridor. So I, I can't see this being beneficial. I could see them coming towards us, asking a letter of request to be a delegation. I would gladly support that. But for us, if it's somebody else on the committee that's gonna meet twice a year, it doesn't seem to make any sense to me. Okay, thank you, Wendy?
Thanks, Chair. I, I tend to feel that a liaison committee would be useful for exactly the opposite of what you're saying, and that is, I'd love to know what everybody else is thinking and asking and what their concerns are as well. I'd love to hear from the other communities than you would in a, in a, in a setting like that. I get the sense that, uh, the majority are going to vote this, you know, vote for this. I, I do believe it's, it would be useful, um, so I won't vote in favor of the motion. I, I understand where you're coming from with it, but I won't be voting in favor of it. And Gord, just to your point, it isn't Mayor McKay that's gonna sit on this liaison committee. He just happened to send it to himself because he happens to be the mayor and, and they're asking for someone from our council to sit on this committee. And it would be one of us that would be sitting on the committee. So I don't really have any problem with it. I, I think we should send someone. Um, they're asking for it, I think we should. Just strictly out of curiosity to see what's going on and, and, and what we can find out here, we're asking for information. The other point is, and I really want to thank our staff for clarifying for me, um, that you're right, Mayor McKay can give us any information that we want, as long as it's not confidential, um, to the committee that he's the chair of, or the board that he's the chair of. Um, but he certainly can't vote on anything that you, that the RDM would vote on. So that's where the conflict lies, not in the information pieces. So I, I, I would like to see us...
Call the question. Yeah, please. Thank you.
That council not support appointment of a member to the Island Corridor Foundation liaison committee, that's the motion on the floor.
Okay. You have the motion, you seconded, it's called a question? All those in favor?
Just hang on a second. The motion's good, but it says, uh, not appoint to the Island Corridor, Corridor Liaison Committee. It's the Island Corridor Foundation Local Government Liaison Committee. It needs to be specific in the title. I'd love to get the Island Corridor Foundation Committee, because that might be telling everything what's going on there.
Chris, you got that?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, Counselor Pratt, Thor, and Brennan, opposed. You called the mayor. All right, so moving on to delegations. Oh, you have a notice of motion? Do you have anything on that or other business?
Not just people. Other than, you know, potential...
So this one's complete?
Yeah.
Next item, delegations. Mr. Peter Sinkley, on behalf of Loews and Fishes Food Bank.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, it has been said, uh, to those who much has been given, much is expected. And clearly, the city of Nanaimo has given much to Loews and Fishes Food Bank. What I am going to share with you today, I believe will not only meet those high expectations, but far exceed them. Back in 2014, I came before you to present a situation. A situation where we had lots of food and no space for the food. And so you saw this picture, a 500-square-foot warehouse absolutely packed with food. And then you saw these pictures, where the food was moved outside, covered in tarts, uh, and volunteers had to work outside in the rain too. Clearly not a good situation. Fortunately, we gave work, we live in a community that cares about these sorts of situations. And you, as a council, stepped up and made a decision. A decision to invest $275,000 in Loews and Fishes Food Bank. This support that you provided was absolutely critical to getting the new warehouse that we have. Without your support, it is highly unlikely that we would be where we are today. So I am here to say thank you. Thank you for making this decision. You served as a catalyst that the community could get behind to ensure that we had a warehouse. And so we received $50,000 from the port authority, we received $51,000 from residents and businesses, and $25,000 in-kind support from Regional Recycling, which allowed us to purchase this facility at the corner of Milton and Fry Street. You may be asking, what is the in-kind support? We got from Regional Recycling a refrigerator, huge walk-in cooler that they had at the facility on Old Victoria. The quote that we had for purchasing the cooler we needed was over $30,000. With the help of volunteers, we were able to take that cooler out of the facility on Old Victoria and install it in here for less than $5,000. So, I present to you the situation in 2015, lots of food and lots of space. As you can see, these pictures are much better than what we had before. There's space for volunteers to work, there's adequate space to store food, uh, and you can see we've got a lot of happy faces. With all of this space though, we were actually able to acquire even more food. And so in April of 2015, we were able to expand the number of grocery store partners that we have in the community. Originally, we had Both Country Grocers, along with Both 50 Foods. And in April, Superstore came on as a full-fledged partner in our food recovery efforts. And this made a dramatic, dramatic difference in the amount of food we were able to access. In 2015, we accessed over $800,000 more food than we did in 2014. Imagine fitting $800,000 worth of food into that 500-square-foot warehouse. It would not have happened. So thank you for helping make this a reality in our community. But it gets better. You've probably seen the Coldstar Facility just south of the airport. In November, they joined our efforts. And so every Friday, we go there and pick up between five and 10 pallets of food valued between $8,000 and $30,000. Again, we would not be able to access this food if we didn't have the warehouse that the city of Nanaimo made possible. But this benefit is not just for Loews and Fishes, it is not just for the people who need our service. We believe that this benefit should have the broadest possible impact in our community. And so we share this abundance. Every month, over 30 other nonprofits and schools come and pick up food from Loews and Fishes Food Bank. They come and access food for their programs, to give to kids, to give to the elderly, to help with counseling. Basically, if you're a nonprofit in Nanaimo and you need food, you can get it for free from Loews and Fishes Food Bank. We have two areas set up in our warehouse where these nonprofits can come and shop. And if the food's in that area, they can take it. In 2014, before we had this warehouse, we supplied over $280,000 worth of food to these other agencies. In 2015, that jumped to over $430,000 worth of food going to others. Groups from the Salvation Army, to Haven House, to Telecom, to the Boys and Girls Club, all receiving food because of the warehouse that you made possible. As we look ahead to 2016, we anticipate this figure going over $700,000. We often hear about all the hungry people, but the good news is, there is an abundance of food in the community. It is absolutely staggering the food that is available. And these stats are showing that we can make a real difference for people who need it. We continue to build for the future, and so we've been relying on volunteers and contractors to help us renovate. These renovations are ongoing. There has been a massive amount of work, uh, done in it. But if you look at the two photos in the bottom right, you can see that we are getting to the end of our renovations. We had a crew of volunteers in last Friday, actually painting, uh, the spaces that we renovated and added, uh, into the warehouse. It is our hope to have a grand opening, uh, sometime this summer, and you, as a council, will certainly be invited. I would encourage you to come to that event. I would also encourage you to personally get in touch with me and come for a tour. We have food banks and nonprofits from across Canada coming to see what is happening here in Nanaimo. This is something our community can be very proud of, and this is something that you, as a council, can be very proud of, that you've got behind and made happen. So thank you. You have done a great thing.
See, questions popping up. Counselor Best, quick, Ken Counselor Pratt. Peter, uh, across the West, and, um, there was obviously some consternation back when the decision was made. And, uh, clearly, clearly this speaks to your efforts, because you were a significant driving force behind this, and, uh, so I'm confident in you and your team. And, and thanks for bringing this information, because as you said earlier this evening, listen, sometimes we don't necessarily receive all the information, um, as it relates to some of the decisions that we've made previously. And with the social equity and all those other kinds of things. And this is, uh, congratulations. You show, please.
Well, I would say again, thank you. And I didn't say it, but this, I believe, this decision was actually made at the first council meeting. So I would say you got off on the right foot.
Well, he raises a really good point, because for several weeks and months, there's been nothing but negativity of...
She's going. Yeah, I know, that's what he said.
About how you've done what you've done. Sorry, it's true.
Yeah, it is.
It's true.
Okay, I was taking a deep breath. Anxiety comes, sometimes it attacks me at this table, and I find the best thing to do is to take a deep breath. That's all I do.
Me too. So when we are hearing today all of the good things, which I think they are, this is just another one that is often overlooked in, in favor of something that's less important and negative. Thank you, Counsel Pratt.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for coming and telling us about all of this, because this is a great, good news story, and it does make me personally feel very good to be part of a council that helped to make this happen. So thank you so much for coming back and reporting. I have a couple of questions, and one of them is, uh, do you have enough volunteers now to do what you need to do, given, I mean, this is an enormous, uh, jump in, in your services, um, in what you're doing. And I'm just wondering, did you have to get more volunteers? And do you have enough volunteers?
Well, we have a line, uh, that we say a lot, we'll figure it out, and do whatever we need to do to get them back. Um, we always need more volunteers. And so right now, we rely on the efforts of over 600 volunteers every month. We are now at a point where things are running really smoothly, and I'm someone who, when they're running smoothly, that means we're ready to take the next step. I have, I can tell you, I can tell you who that I've been in touch with, two major grocery store chains, their upper management, um, to begin doing food recovery with those stores. store chains, their upper management, to begin doing food recovery with those stores. And the challenge is, when those stores come online, it's really disruptive. I mean, when Superstore came on, the first day we showed up, we picked up six pallets of food. Six pallets that the week before, we didn't have to deal with. But today, we have to figure it out. And if one of these grocery stores said, hey, we want to do food recovery with you tomorrow, we would be there tomorrow and we would figure it out. So yes, we need more volunteers. One of the things that we're hoping to do, and one of the things that I had presented when we made the request to this funding, is that we might expand the number of hours that food is available to people. And we haven't been able to do that yet because of volunteers. We need to have actually people there to distribute the food. So we can always use more. We can have a volunteer coordinator. And if you want to volunteer, just go to our website.
So that was my one question. The other one is...
Got some lotion?
Yeah. This is a story that needs to be shared because it's a really good news story. You often hear, I've seen in magazines, stories about, you know, collecting food in New York and, you know, in places like that where they've really had these innovative programs. And I see this as something that's really been innovative on your part in bringing on partnerships that have really helped you expand. And I don't know what the proper venue for that would be. You know, I'd love to see this written in a magazine of some kind. I don't know whether there are publications that focus on the kind of work you're doing.
Yeah, one of the ways that we've thought of doing is actually releasing a short documentary on it, on the history and actually showing the results. And we've looked at avenues to actually do that. One of the ways that I, sorry, one of my passions is to see this happen in every community, not just in the public service. This should be happening everywhere in the world because there is enough food out there. And so I step on, you know, any opportunity I get to speak. Next week, I'll be speaking up in Hartsville. In May, I'll be speaking at Food Banks B C Conference. If I get an opportunity, this is my passion. And so I will do whatever it takes to make this happen in other communities.
Well, Peter, you're an inspiration. We really are. And all of your volunteers, so I really wish you good luck in. And thank you for being willing to go and share in other communities as well because this should be happening everywhere. You're absolutely right. Somebody, just the other day, and I don't even remember where it was, I think it was a conference at Harrison Hot Springs, and they were talking about the food issue. And someone said, you know, in Canada, it is disgraceful that people don't have enough food. And they were right. It is just graceful. But you're doing something about it. And good for you. You just, this is amazing. It really is. And it just lifts my heart that you're, that you have to say so. Thank you.
Councillor Thor.
Thanks Chair. Very quickly, Peter, just to echo what others have said, thank you so much for coming, sharing this really good news story with us. We need more of us. And really appreciate your efforts and the work of your volunteers. And I'm glad that we, as the city, could be a part of that. I do remember, and I think it was our first meeting, one of the first decisions we made, and it wasn't without some debate because I don't think that money was in the budget. But we made that decision. And it reminds me of that saying about, you toss a pebble in the water, who knows where the ripples will end up. And $275,000 was a pretty big pebble. But I hear that you've leveraged that and it's created more opportunities and more responses from the community. I'm so pleased that the local stores are on board with you. And that's just so great to hear. So thank you.
And what I would say is, these numbers that I've shared with you, those are just for one year. This is going to go on. Like it's year after year. So yeah, it's, it is a good news story.
I have not toured your facility, so I will be in touch. I'd like to come up and have a look. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. One is, what are you doing with your old facility? Do you still like, do you still use that?
Yes, we have both facilities. They're just a block apart from each other. It's been really good having them that close because it's allowed seamless transition. The service that we provide for people in need has only gotten better. There's been no, we're down for two months while we make the switch. It just, it works. We use that facility for distribution clients. So when I said that I'd like to expand the number of hours that we're open, it would be at that facility. So right now, we're open for six hours a week. The ideal situation would be to see that open for six hours a day, Monday through Friday. So rather than having to line up at the food bank and wait two hours to get food, you'd stop by and it's convenient for you.
Now, second one, I said, just do some rough math when you talk about the Coldstar Initiative. And it, if you're talking between 500 and 30,000 a week, I just pumped it kind of down the middle at 15,000 times 50 weeks. That's another three quarters of a million dollars a year.
The numbers that go with food recovery are staggering. Like, when you do these calculations, oh, should we do this or should we do that? And I, you know, I've been in conversations with people who aren't convinced that food recovery is the way to go for the food bank. And I said, look, look at these numbers. Like, what am I missing here? Because the numbers are really that staggering. The challenge that we have as an organization is, for 30 years, food banks have told the story. Give us food, and we will give that to people in need. If you give us money, we will buy food and give it to people in need. And what we're saying now is, give us money. We're going to pay wages, we're going to pay overhead, and all these bad things that nonprofits aren't supposed to do, but we're going to go access this food. And so prior to having this warehouse, for every dollar we got in, we turned it into $3.50. With this new warehouse, for every dollar we get in, we turn it into $4.30 for food. So there's, there's an efficiency that's gained. Now, we've changed how we spend the money, but it is yielding more food per dollar.
Councillor Brennan.
I'm sorry, I have to, we have to catch the bus, so. I'm going to wait a little bit. So, you need it. Thank you for the most.
Any other questions?
Enjoy the poetry, guys.
Same here. Thank you very much, Chris.
I'll go to you on the bus now? Oh, great.
We'll should receive the delegation. Councillor Thor and councillor Yolke, second. Thank you. All questions, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. O'Dell has advised that he is not available to speak to us today. So last item is question period.
Yeah, we just got the email.
That's why he's not here. That's why he's not here.
Could I ask if you happen to know if Loews and Fishes is your seats for the value of food that you pick up from different places? Like for...
Peter, we have to, we have to... I can ask your question, but here's one.
No, it's a public, it's a public meeting, that's why I would ask it.
We don't have the answer.
You don't know the answer.
Sure. We have an answer. I don't know the answer.
My next question.
Sir, 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 can you come up supporting, please?
Of course, thank you.
If you want to answer this question. It's only to try to capture the camera angle.
I guess you'd better say Fred Taylor 204, we wait, sorry.
Thank you.
Can you see the letter from the Chair of the Foundation Corridor Foundation?
Sir, I'll have to step up. Councillor Hall.
Could I ask, when so many of your members are R N, et cetera, et cetera, that if there's going to be any demand, or could there be a demand to make to have their agenda, minutes and meetings open to the public? Right now, they're, they're with the public, they're in meeting. And you're putting lots of money in there. It's a little timely and bold. And if there is something that is confidential, just like council meetings, then a separate in-camera meeting. Otherwise, their initial meeting, twice a year, if that's what it is, should be open to the public. Minutes should be available and agendas should be available. And then stock your money until it is.
Thank you, sir. You asked already.
It needs somebody to make that motion.
We will, if you're already involved that.
And could I also ask, is the city's intention to remove, once C-SPAN is voted to deploy, is it your intention to move or remove railroad tracks in the dock accompanying that, I think the Wellcox yard down here?
Yeah. I don't...
It's, it's no, there's no intention to start removing tracks.
Because I am concerned as an individual, it is Canada's dream as part of the direction for a railway to Esquimalt across Canada. And if you attempt to remove that connection, you create no problem. Because it's part of the theory, direction for railway across Canada to Esquimalt. And I believe there's no other connection but this one that we have in our front door.
Okay. Thank you. Allegate councillor, Baswick and councillor, take it.
Quick, Mr. Chair. Two topics. ADICC, as it relates to the governance of ICF and its operations, is going to be reviewed.
Thank you.
So I understand that we'll probably undertake a considerable amount of topics as it relates to how it operates. Number two, the, I'm glad you said to Esquimalt because when Victoria rebuilt the Johnson Street Bridge, the train doesn't go to Victoria. It stops north of Victoria and passengers in trade or commerce will have to be unloaded and then reloaded or whatever. Secondly, I will respectfully disagree with you on the Wellcox property, that I think we create a problem by not removing the tracks at the Wellcox property. And the dream is just that. It's a dream. So when C-SPAN leaves, I hope that we entertain removing the tracks.
So, sir, what would be the connection for the Island Corridor Foundation for rail service to the island?
What, to the island? Uh, somewhere else, other than...
So you're suggesting they have to build a new one?
Well, I'm suggesting that it's somewhere else. And if there isn't a new one, I don't know what Shemias has anymore. How many, how many cars come over right now a week? How many?
There was about eight passenger, old-time passenger cars up in 1952, engine that got over here to take people to, including America, to Wellington back.
Yeah, well, great. I'm never going to ride the train to Wellington. I can assure you of that. So...
You got to run.
How many, how many cars come over from Vancouver? How many cars come over on that thing? What are they called? Cars? Is that what they're called?
Well, several cars come over.
How many?
Tank cars.
How many?
Approximately 600 propane cars a year, I can imagine.
But if you go down to the Wellcox yard, you'll see Northwest, whatever it is, from Hartwell loading up down there and going up, go over our truck route direction and so on. So...
Okay. Sounds good. Councillor K.
I'd like to address your thing on the dream of a railway across Canada. It was signed, it was, it was signed in a time long, long ago, in a place far, far away. Now First Nations has bigger claims to the land. Pride and Enterprise owns the land. And the federal rule that wrote that law was made in an archaic time, under archaic situations. And what we're looking at now is, there's even a stretch down in South Island that is privately owned by a private developer and he's saying no train. Snanos has now a claim of this train going through the land.
Why do we get a, we're from the local government.
For B C Rail. That was for B C Rail.
No, no, it's for, it's for the C R.
I need to go to the jury room, that's tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Nope. We'll should do a adjourn.
We'll should do adjourn. Moved by councillor Thor and secondaire councillor Pratt. All those in favor? Okay, Nigel. Who submitted guys' good work? We're up to the B minus.